Okay, my phone says it's 6:30. So are we ready to get started? Looks like we have pretty much everybody so okay. I will call this March 4th, the Mamish Planning Commission Virtual Meeting to order. And let's start out with the meeting accessibility statement. Jackie?
Thank you Chair Baughman. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are accessible to the public and public comment is still able to be submitted. To view live, you can go to the city website at www.samamish.us/tv21, visit the city YouTube channel, or on Comcast Channel 21 within the city only. To view the meeting later, they're generally available the day after the meeting on the city website, on the city YouTube, and on Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish. Thanks.
Thank you Jackie. Okay, let's start out with a roll call. And I will say in advance that Rituja kindly sent a note that she had a conflict and could not join us this evening. So let's do a roll call with everybody else. Me, Mark Baughman, present. Karen Malcolm.
Present.
Present.
Josh Amato.
Here.
TC Labby.
Present.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
Erthik Setharmon.
Present.
Great, thank you. Next approval of the agenda. Any comments or adjustments for this evening's agenda? Seeing no comments, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Kelly, is this where you wanted to make a statement?
Yes, thank you very much Chair Baughman. So we will be canceling our next meeting, March 18th. We were scheduled to discuss and have a work session on the Stormwater Code Updates. As some of you may have heard, Danica Glavikar will be leaving the city. Her last day is, I believe, tomorrow. She and her family are moving down to California. And we needed to do a roster change and bring in a new project manager for that work. So in light of that, in light of onboarding a staff member, which will be Lindsay Osgolz and Stephanie Sullivan in Public Works, we need to push this work out a little bit to give them time to prepare. So we will be coming to you with the Stormwater Code Updates in May. And we will be canceling, excuse me, canceling the March 18th meeting. So we will not have another meeting in March for this month. So that is your update.
Okay, thanks for letting us know Kelly. Next item is approval of the minutes from our February 18th meeting. Have you had a chance to review those minutes? And does anybody have any comments, corrections, questions? Nope. Okay, looks like nobody has any corrections, so we'll call those minutes approved by common consent. Next, we have non-agenda public comment. So our agenda items for this evening are an update on implementation strategies for the Urban Forest Management Plan and a discussion on the work around the Phase 2 development regulations. So public comments not related to that is not the time for that. Let's see, Jackie, do we have anybody for public comment? I guess you need to read the statement first and then see if we have anybody.
We do have one caller so far, but I'm going to read the statement real quick just to give anyone else a chance to chime in. For verbal public comment, up to three minutes of public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311, and the access code is 699-839-229. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You will hear a voice say unmuted when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. I'll go ahead and unmute the first caller. Please state your name and your address for the record. Go ahead.
My name is Brett Searls. Actually, I have an agenda item that I wanted to talk about. It's sad to hear that Danica is leaving. However, I did have discussions with her, as well as Evan and Miriam about our issues. Recently, I live, I am the Vice President on the HOA Board for Wyndham Square, which is on Northeast 8th and 235th. And we have a wetland area at the north end of the HOA. And we also have some houses there that were needing some tree service provided for some of their trees that were in the wetlands that were overlooking the houses. After the tree service provider discussed with our treasurer some of the work that was done, they found that the trees were in good shape, but one of the trees was a little weak, and they provided some fertilizer to help maintain the tree's health. The concern is that our board has had to deal with these trees, and we were afraid that they would fall into bad condition, and we were trying to figure out how to budget maintaining these trees. So if an emergency occurred, we were wondering if we had enough money to cover these expenditures. In working with the city of Rockford, Illinois, they were dealing with the fact that a lot of the trees were killed off by Dutch elm disease. And the city of Rockford commissioned a study to determine the condition of these trees lying in the streets. And from this study, it was possible to determine which trees needed to be removed and which trees needed to be maintained, and so they could develop a plan to maintain these trees. So I have been in discussion with the city of Samamish concerning, because this wetland is a designation by the county and the city to be maintained as a wetland. And in these discussions, some of the details were borne out, that there are a number of HOAs in the Samamish area that have the same issues that we do. So we as a community enjoy the view, and we do like the fact that it provides a barrier to the busy Northeast 8th Street. However, we don't have the funding for in cases of major emergencies if trees are starting to go south. And there is a disease that seems to be hitting the spruce trees, and it's something that we need to be concerned about. So in our discussions, I felt that since already our trees are in good shape, it would be nice to work with the city to figure out a plan to help us maintain the health of these trees. And it would be great, since there are a number of HOAs that could benefit from working together to help maintain these green belts, it would be beneficial also for the city to work with us to help us reduce and stabilize our costs. This would be beneficial to all parties because, A, it would keep the existing trees healthy within the cities, and also get HOAs to participate in maintaining the urban forestry. And it would also assist HOAs with stabilizing the cost of maintenance. So my proposal is, just like the city does with garbage collection, it would work with the participating HOAs as an agent to negotiate for better pricing to help us maintain the trees in our care. With a larger pool of customers, a service provider, or providers, could reduce their cost, their billing to the customer. And this way, the city can maintain its beautiful landscapes, the HOA can enjoy their landscape while stabilizing the cost of maintaining these trees, and the service provider or providers can have constant business. That is my conclusion.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm going to go ahead and place you back on mute. If you'd like to make comment again during the agenda topic, you'll have that opportunity as well. I'll put it back to you Chair Baughman.
Okay, thanks, and thanks for those comments. And so let's move on to our business for this evening. And appropriately tied in here, the first topic is an update on implementation strategies for the Urban Forest Management Plan.
Great, thank you Chair Baughman. Give me one second to get my screen pulled up, and I will get going with the presentation. Good evening Planning Commission. My name is Evan Fisher, and I'm a Senior Management Analyst with DCD. Tonight, we will continue to explore the UFMP Strategic Implementation Plan. I am joined by Kelly Hildy, our DCD's Deputy Director, as well as Ian Scott from Davi Resource Group, who has been helping us with the UFMP and the SIP from the very beginning. They're both here to help answer questions after the presentation. Quickly, let's go over tonight's agenda for the presentation. I'll start by providing a brief project update. This will bring you up to speed on the work staff has been doing since our last meeting on January 21st. After that, we'll dive right into our new material and look at the SIP grouping framework. I'll go over what it is, how it works, before we discuss next steps, and then open it up for discussion and questions. Moving on to our project update, a lot of work has been done in the last month and a half since we met. Staff have held internal stakeholder meetings with our Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation, Finance, Community Development, as well as our Emergency Manager. We wanted to get their feedback on the implementation actions that could be included on their future work plans, as well as to understand their staffing and work planning capacity over 2021 and 2022. It was clear from these meetings that there's a lot of excitement within the city's department for this work to begin, but given limited staffing and work plan capacity, much of the interdepartmental work will rely on future allocation of additional urban forestry resources. Staff also met in groups in twos and threes with our planning commissioners to get your feedback on the SIP Implementation Strategies Matrix. These meetings were very helpful in developing the Implementation Grouping Framework, which I will discuss in a few minutes, and in how to effectively communicate each phase of the SIP. We want to say thanks to our planning commissioners for taking time to provide their feedback and joining us in those meetings. And we'd also like to take a moment to thank the members of the public who submitted comments on our Connect Samamish tool, and for those who continue to stay engaged in this project. Additionally, staff with the help of Ian have analyzed each of the 159 implementation actions based on the criteria listed here. This detailed analysis allows staff to more accurately understand what resources will be needed for each action, who will be doing them, and how long they'll take. This understanding has helped group each action into its appropriate phase, which I'll talk more about in the coming slides. Now that we're caught up on the work that has been done, I think it's a good moment to pause and talk about what feedback we are hoping to get from the Planning Commission in our discussion tonight. There are two key questions that will be important for you to keep in mind as we move through the presentation. Those questions are, is the implementation sequencing of establish, build, strengthen, and optimize correct? And do the action types listed in Group 1 establish the Urban Forest Management Program? As I mentioned above, staff with the help of the Planning Commission have developed a framework to establish how implementation actions are placed into work plans. The framework sorts actions into four groups, with each group being built around a theme. Group 1 will establish the Urban Forest Management Program during 21 and 22 work plan. Group 2 will build the program over 23, 24. Group 3 will strengthen our program over 25, 26. And Group 4 will optimize the program in 2027 and beyond. We feel the implementation sequence of establishing, building, strengthening, and optimizing will allow us to successfully develop and maintain the urban forestry program over the coming years. But as I noted in the previous slide, we are eager to hear if the Planning Commission also believes this sequence will put the program on a path to success. As you will recall from Exhibit 2 of the Agenda Packet, the grouping framework contains a lot of information. Over the coming slides, we will go into each group in more detail, but I wanted to provide a high-level primer before we dive in. Under each group in the framework are group action types. These action types are very important in our review tonight. They communicate the general types of implementation actions that will go into each group instead of listing out each and every one of the 159 implementation actions. Using Group 1 as an example, the action type Inventory and Analysis refers to a number of specific implementation actions from the matrix, but allows us here tonight much more easily talk through the type of work that will happen in each phase. The framework also lists the types of actions that are ongoing and will occur over each work cycle. This includes actions like staff and volunteer training, community outreach and education, and the State of the Urban Forest Report, to name a few. Again, these actions will be consistently done as part of the program and therefore do not live under a specific group. Lastly, the framework also lists outcomes for each group. By listing outcomes, we can determine if the work being proposed for each work plan cycle will meet the group's theme. Said differently, it's a way to check to make sure the action types of each group achieve what we are hoping they will achieve. Having gone through an overview of the framework, we will now look at the groups individually, starting with Group 1. Group 1 is very important in our discussion tonight because it shapes the work that will start as soon as the City Council approves the 21-22 Urban Forest Work Plan. Group 1 lists the action types of inventory and analysis, which helps us understand the city's current urban forest resources and assesses the city's initial street tree inventory. Additionally, it will allow us to begin inventorying cases of laminated root rot. We will be updating city contracts and specifications to ensure tree work within the city is meeting appropriate safety and arborist standards. We will be establishing an annual budget, which will help ensure there are financial resources for future urban forestry work. And we'll explore partnership opportunities to engage community leaders, volunteers, and other potential urban forestry partners. If you would like to see all of the specific implementation actions associated with these action types, you can find those in Exhibit 3, pages 1 through 7. When considering Group 1, it is important to remember the practical limitations facing the program and staff. Currently, there is limited staff capacity across the city's departments to take on too much in the established phase of the program. Also, we are very excited that City Council allocated budget for the urban forestry work in 21-22, but we are limited to $150,000 over the first two years. Moving on to Group 2, we see the action types of program management and staffing, establishing a tree board, developing emergency response plans, and wildfire prevention planning, and code and policy updates. Group 2 will be a very big lift. As I'm sure you are aware, over the period of 2023 and 2024, the city will be updating its comprehensive plan, and by association, the Critical Areas Ordinance and Development Regulations. Because this work will already be occurring, it makes sense for any urban forestry-related code changes to coincide with these big policy and code changes. Also, because there's so much work to be done in Group 2, it will be critical that there is the budgetary backing to get this work done. To complete all of these tasks, we will need a dedicated staff person to lead them. This person will be responsible for working to establish a tree board and taking the necessary code changes through the legislative review, in addition to other program work. To effectively build the program, the tasks in Group 2 are essential and will require a significant budget to be completed. Looking further into the future, we get to Group 3. In Group 3, we will be completing action types like Urban Forest Evaluation and Assessment, Planning and Procuring a City-Operated Greenhouse and Watering Truck, and Creating Community Incentive Programs. This work will establish a Tree and Plant Salvage Greenhouse and Watering Infrastructure, fully integrate street tree inventory management into Public Works operations, and closely involve our regional partners. Last but not least is Group 4. Group 4 will see a focus on actions like expanding volunteer programs, creating a wood reuse and recycle program, and using LiDAR data to evaluate historic canopy mapping and to identify an average canopy coverage percentage. It may also include a review and amendments to the Urban Forest Management Plan. Now that we have covered all of the groups, it may be helpful, again, to bring up the two questions that we are focusing on for tonight. Again, the first question we'd like Planning Commission's feedback on is, is the implementation sequencing of establish, build, strengthen, and optimize correct? And two, do the action types listed in Group 1 establish the Urban Forest Management Program? Very quickly, before we open it up for discussion, I'll cover the next steps. On April 15th, we will hold a public hearing where we will ask the Planning Commission to recommend the work plan that has been developed using the action types in Group 1, as well as the Implementation Strategies Matrix to the City Council. This summer, we will bring those items before the City Council and seek approval of the work plan so staff can begin implementing the work in 21 and 22. And with that, I will circle back to Group 1, so we have a starting point for our discussion, and turn it back to you Chair Baughman.
Thanks Evan. Before we have sort of general discussion, can you, and you did describe it, but I'm going to ask you once again, just to make sure, those items that are listed as ongoing, so if we were to look at Group 1, which is kind of the work plan for the first biennium, the ongoing items on the detailed matrix essentially would also be included with Group 1 as a list of actions that are in the work plan for the first two years of this, right? I think those ongoing things, it's a little confusing to say, is that in the first part, or is it just spread out, or what is it? And so that's why I'm just verifying that if you looked at the work plan for the first two years, it would include all of Group 1 and all of the ongoing?
That's a good question, Mark, and thanks for it. You're correct that, so the actions, these ongoing actions are types of work that will happen in Group 1 as well as in Group 2, 3, and 4. So actions like staff and volunteer training, this is something we might see multiple times over the course of the implementation of the UFMP program. So some of those staff and volunteer training items in the Implementation Strategies Matrix will be included in Group 1, as well as will be seen again in Group 2, 3, and 4. Same with the State of the Urban Forest Report. This is something that will happen annually, so it will be included in all of these plans. And Kelly and Ian, if you have anything to add, please feel free.
Okay, thanks. So I'll open it up to the commissioners. What comments or questions do you have about the strategies under the grouping? Trying to scan around and see what, Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'll jump in. There was that pregnant pause, or whatever it was. Well, first off, I want to recognize the hard work, Evan, and Ian, and Kelly, and I'm sure others have put into this. You took a very large matrix and simplified it, and it's very helpful. So getting to the questions, and especially around does Group 1 establish the plan, I do have a couple of comments. Overall, I'd say yes, but one or two questions that may help to further strengthen that establishment. And one is that in Group 2, the tree board is established. And I guess my question related to the tree board is whether or not it would play an important role in establishing the overall plan, and could in fact potentially be used to help coordinate some of the early-on volunteer activities that might help with inventory and so forth. So that's the first comment. I have one or two others, but I guess I'd like to hear why tree board is in the Group 2 versus the Group 1.
Great, Kelly, sure.
I can answer all. So establishing a tree board would require somewhat of a heavy lift at the staff level. I don't believe we would need to use the funding allocated to support that effort. But this would require working with the City Council to establish the goals for a tree board, some rules of procedure, updating Title 2, which is where you see your Planning Commission, Human Services Commission, that would be an ordinance, so there would be some legislative work associated with that. So the scope of work to establish a tree board would be a lift, and we could definitely, I think the commission can consider that, moving that to Group 1. We would just need to balance that out with the other items, and maybe we move something from Group 1 to Group 2, if we think that's important. That is something you should consider for sure.
Okay, that's helpful Kelly. The other one has to do with the education, especially with the public. And so this is kind of down in the weeds a little bit, but education could be just awareness. I think I would add, to promote the importance of the Forest Management Plan as a means to get public input and hopefully support for budget considerations down the road.
Agreed.
So it's a marketing effort. I may have comments later on, but overall, it feels like you're on the right track with the establishment, the implementation plan.
Thanks Mike. I just want to check and see if Ian had anything to add. He looked like he was going to say something.
Well, thank you, Mark. I appreciate the recognition. I agree with everything that Kelly said. I think it's important to recognize around establishing a tree board is that the city doesn't have an urban forestry program at the moment. They have a plan to create one, and so there is a lot of leadership that needs to be generated at the city in order to help pull together that tree board. So I think that first phase, it could easily, like, I don't see 22 and 23 as being a hard line, but as an organic progression of like, okay, when the city knows what they have in terms of, like, some of the outcomes from the early exercises, we'll get a better handle on the laminated root rot problem, take it to the tree board next, and see how we can engage the community to work on it. We'll know more about the urban forest, street tree inventory, or parks. There will be more information for that tree board to potentially deliberate on and help support. Then as far as educating and promoting, the State of the Urban Forest Report is really a key element to, like, an annual refresher to keep it forward on everybody's mind. I see that as a big point of promotion. But I think also, early on, like, as we get into that point where you're establishing a tree board, a lot of that promotion's going to really escalate. So in the early parts, I could see, like, the tree planting activity is going to be something to tout and to engage the community on, especially as, you know, parks, even though they haven't fully engaged with the plan yet, I'm certain they have plans to plant trees and, you know, celebrate Arbor Day and do things that are opportunities to really connect back with the plan and elevate it. Thank you, Mark. I think I'm a little shy on go-to meetings to pushing my voice forward.
Let me, Mark, I'd like to do a quick follow-up. Thank you Ian, that was very helpful. One of the reasons I was commenting on the tree board, thinking about some of the leadership that it could provide, so the follow-up question, like, who would be providing the leadership that it could provide, so the follow-up question, like, who would be providing the leadership in that established phase? You know, are there sufficient resources? Because there is a lot to get things going, right, as you were just saying, so help us understand a little bit about how it would get done. Kelly, you're nodding your head, so.
Yeah, I can take that. I wanted to look, I'm looking at Evan and Ian at the same time to see if one of them is going to jump in, but I can definitely jump in. That's a really good question, and as you were asking it, I was like, oh, hmm. We'd have to, we really, we would, we would have to talk about that internally, you know, developing the UFMP and getting that, you know, from initiation to adoption really fell on BCD, Community Development, and as, as well as kind of fostering the implementation strategy through and getting those approved. So, I think initially, it would fall on BCD, but we would work really closely with parks. And I think the question needs to be asked of our City Council as well, like, here are our resources, this is your team here, you know, is this a collaborative, you know, collaborative work item between parks and BCD? But that's where getting, again, that hiring that urban forester and having someone come in to lead that effort would, would be really helpful. Do I think it's impossible to look at bringing, you know, moving Tree Board into Group One? Nope. I just, I think it would take work, I think it's some direction from City Council and how they would like us to handle that, and, you know, working with the Parks Department to see if they would be willing to partner and collaborate on that work as well. Hopefully, that makes sense. So, I think this is something we need to look into a little bit more, and maybe we can provide that update at our next meeting.
I'll add to that, say that there's a lot of cities that establish a Tree Board under their Parks Commission, or as a subcommittee. I mean, that's kind of the early stages of it. So, that, that group of the, and I pulled up a picture of the Parks Recreation Commission, and I'm like, yeah, so in that group, I'm sure there's people that are engaged as volunteers, are excited to participate in how parks are managed, and they can be, they may get brought in as a subcommittee, and then the subcommittee becomes a full-on Tree Board through city administrative, you know, decisions.
Okay, who else has, oh, Karthik? You got any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, I think I echo Mike's comments on the hard work that has gone into this presentation. Thank you very much for collating all these ideas into these groups. Appreciate it. I have a couple of comments. If I go to Group Three, and it's similar to Mike's, in Group Three, you have something called Tree Permitting Analysis, but then in Group Two, you have the code updates. I'm not sure if, you know, you want to do the analysis before code updates or not. That is one thing. And the second one is, you know, beyond Group One, everything is budget approved. So, I do not know what this budget is. I do not know if there are comparative studies between Sammamish and similar cities that have been done. If you don't get the budget you asked for, you know, are these in the order of priorities? Like, for example, you know, if you don't get the full budget, would we cut the right of way tree population in this Group Two? Is that how I should read this?
Thank you for the kind words and for the question. I think the truth is, if the budget doesn't come through, we'll have to really consider how, what the current staffing levels can take on. So, some of these items, I think, would drop off of, off of the groups and get pushed further down the road. I think we'd have to have discussions about how, how to decide which of those items stay and which can go. It would sort of depend on staff's capacity, which, what direction we have from the City Council, but we would have to reconsider the actions we have listed. And Ian, I'm not sure if you have anything to add about how other cities set budgets or the kind of budgets they work with, but I think those, that would be sort of the considerations we'd have to take, should the budget not come through.
Yeah, no, that's, that's very much the case. If, if the, if the budget asks, you know, aren't achieved, then things just can't get accomplished, and it gets delayed, and it slows it down. But that's, that's the adaptive nature of the plan that we're, we've developed here, is that something, it's something that can circle back and, okay, well, you know, like, this conversation, when we get to, when we get to year Twenty-Two, Twenty-Five, and we're in, at the Planning Commission or at the City Council making proposals for, for work, there'll be new information on the table, but, you know, it'll, it'll be an opportunity to adapt at that point.
Got it. And can you also answer the relationship between the Tree Permit Analysis and the Tree Codes? You know, the way I say it, they seem to be flip-flopped. Maybe we should do the analysis before the codes are updated, or maybe I got it wrong. Appreciate the feedback.
Well, I, I'll start. And I, you know, I think that's a great observation, because it had me thinking for a second. You know, one of the things, as we were assembling the matrix, we were trying to think about workloads that would come, and the code and policy updates was put into Group Two, because everybody recognized the timing of that is when a lot of other code updates were being considered, so it was, it was, it seemed like a reasonable time to take that on. And, and so, if you imagine that the codes are enhanced, you know, in, in that Group Two exercise, the permits then, that, that people have to engage in order to comply with code, you know, that then could get reviewed in this, in this Group Three to find ways to streamline it. You know, we heard during public outreach, there was, you know, a lot of people don't want to get, well, they don't, they don't want to get bogged down in too many permits, too many exhaustive reports. And so, by looking at the code, we could, we're hoping to, you know, make, make, make more efficient decisions, and then, and then develop permits that are, are a little bit more efficient. And I think, I think that's, that was our thinking, but I don't, I don't, I would say that of all the things that you guys have pointed out so far, that's one of those ones where, you're right, you might be doing some of that analysis as part of Group Two. It'll certainly be a consideration.
Yeah, and I just, I wanted to add to that. I'm going back, I think I'm in Exhibit Three, which, yeah, Exhibit Three, I'm looking at the Group Three items, and I believe this is number fourteen, Developing Assessment Method to Identify and Prioritize Vegetation Management Efforts in the Forest Understory. I'm, I'm trying to find where we say "analysis," to be quite honest, but Ian is right, but before we get going on the Tree Code Updates, we would do an analysis, for sure, of the existing code. We would do an analysis compared to the existing code to our goals and objectives in the UFMP, as well as the comprehensive plan. That happens naturally. Every time we do a code update, that's, that's a precursor to that, so that we can see where our gaps are. And I think we need to follow up on that specific item that you've pointed out, because I'm not seeing where we have that in the Group Three list, but we will follow up on that.
Do we have any type of historical information that shows us either how many trees were removed, or how many acres cleared, or how many permits issued, how many permits applied for, general statistics like that, going back any period of time, that we can use as kind of a barometer?
For tree removal, if it was permitted, yes, we can pull that from our permit tracking database pretty easily. Outside of that, we would do an analysis of aerial imagery as another tool to consider to provide, to provide that information. Ian, did I miss anything?
No, and I think, you know, that's the kind of information and metrics that would show up in, it should show up in the State of the Urban Forest Report. You know, especially in the early on, where there's not a lot of additional information, you know, getting a sense of like, hey, this is how much, you know, how many trees were permitted for removal in this past year, you know, gives a sense, and assuming that all the replacement trees were, were completed as their permit applications, we have a sense of how many trees were replanted.
Is, is aerial imagery granular enough or frequent enough to be able to validate whether or not those replacement trees were in fact put in, or is it an honor system?
No, I think it's, it's an honor system or code enforcement, which was, remember that being an issue identified through a lot, through both city staff and, and, you know, public workshops, that, you know, the permits are approved, but there's not a lot of staff or budget to go and check to make sure that the work was done, that was permitted. So, that's an ongoing challenge.
Sorry, with the, with the analysis of the canopy or kind of the aerial imagery, would that be something that would be undertaken on a perpetual basis, or is this a one-and-done? So, I guess the question leads to, once the, once the aerial imagery is, is, I guess, analyzed, and we say, okay, here's kind of the way things lay out, how frequently are we going to make sure that there are not unpermitted things happening just beyond, you know, a tree line where you can't see, you know, from a, from a public roadway or something like that?
Well, you know, it's hard to imagine, but the, the cost of remote sensing is steadily coming down. Like, there's new information, people are, people are, people, there is, there's technology with drone work that's being done, there's LiDAR work that's being done. So, the, the city made that investment in advance of the UFMP development to understand its urban tree canopy. You know, it's in the plan to revisit that and do that analysis again. However, we recognize that three and four years from now, that the county, King County may, may permit an exercise that updates tree canopy for the entire, for the entire county, and Sammamish could ride along with that and get the information. You know, there, there's just, there's a lot of different, at the regional and national level, taking an interest in the state of, in the state of forests. So, there, there may be new information, but it, at the very least, in the plan, it would be something, if it doesn't come any other way, you know, five years from now, it gets revisited again. Or maybe it's ten years. The matrix is awful long. I'm having a hard time finding the specific spot on it.
Yeah, I think we've identified it in Twenty-Two, Twenty-Five. Yeah, and that, that is again to gear up for any review, gearing up for the review of the UFMP and looking at updates to information in the UFMP, that analysis and inventory, and then any adjustments to goals and policies. It's a very similar process we go with our, we do with our comp plan. We do space that out, because that analysis of your aerial imagery, the last time we did it with the University of Washington, took a little less than a year, and it was about $60,000. So, there is a cost associated with that, and that doesn't account, that doesn't count the cost to get that imagery, that's paid for separately, but as Ian mentioned, that was a partnership with King County and other jurisdictions, so that cost was lower than if we were just to do it for Sammamish. So, there are some costs associated with that. And, and by the time we get to Twenty-Two, Twenty-Five, hopefully that comes down quite a bit, hopefully technology changes as fast as it is. But yeah, that's something, if we're, if we're getting through this, this work program, if we're starting to see the environment change so much that we really need to maybe look at that UFMP a little sooner, that's something that can move up. And that's the beauty of this implementation plan, is that it's fluid in that way, and the way we get to a decision if things should adjust and move up into a group or move out a group, will, you know, be based on what we report as part of our annual Urban Forestry Report and that data collection, to help inform City Council when they are reviewing the work plan and the budget associated with it. So, it's a very dynamic plan, and anyway, this is just a starting point. This is where we start with, and we go from here, and your recommendation as well.
Okay, Josh, I see you had some comments.
I did. So, I'll start with, on the ones I emailed in. We've got the website, that's being worked on, and I don't know what the content analysis looks like for how that's going to be reorganized, but it seems to me, and I could be very wrong, but that an easy and early win for the UFMP would be making it very clear and easy for homeowners to understand what it takes to get a tree permit removed, you know, just making it very easy. It seems like something we could do, I don't know. So, if, if that's possible to do under the website, I'm seeing you shaking your head. I'll let you talk.
Oh, no, I totally agree. That's what I'm shaking. Our website has its challenges to save the lease, and we have, we have a really good start with this information to make it more accessible and easy to navigate. So, absolutely, I think those are early wins, and so that's why I was shaking my head, because I'm like, yeah, I really do want to do that. Those are early wins, and, and finding a way, again, to make it more accessible for the public and easier to find, and then understand that process so that they can be successful with obtaining those permits.
Okay. That would be wonderful. My next one is on the Tree Board. I have a lot of the same concerns that Mike brought up. So, I'd be interested in knowing how much of an impact that would have by not having it in place in Group One, because in looking at the groupings you have, I don't know if the goal is to start some of those things in Twenty, you know, Twenty-Three and then end at some point, right? So, if it were presented in like a Gantt chart, so we could understand the start and stop point of these projects, I could then have a better understanding of how important I actually feel a Tree Board would be to implementing Group One. Things like the code updates, I don't know when that's starting, and when the Tree Board might be coming in, you know, relative to that. So, that's, I'm wondering if for the, for the public hearing, we could maybe have a better understanding of start and stop time. That way, I could form a stronger opinion about start project and end project time, so I could form a better opinion around the Tree Board item. And that might be a lot to ask, so.
The, the challenge with that is, some of these things like the, how, how much of the Tree Code is going to be updated, and so the scope of that, and the associated timelines, those are some unknown factors. Can you go to Group Two really quick, Evan? Board. Wow. Yeah, I think probably the code timelines, because we don't have a defined scope of work. I think the code and policy updates does go hand-in-hand, because your, your code and your policy can't conflict, so our code can't conflict with the comp plan. And so, it's, yeah, it's a chicken and egg conundrum. We really have to do policy work, and then shortly following that, it becomes a development regulation update. I think we could provide something high level, with the caveat of it will probably be further defined as that scope gets further defined.
That makes, that makes complete sense. And so, to vocalize it, my concern is that Twenty-Two, the Twenty-Two-Three, Twenty-Two-Four budget gets approved in the Twenty-Two-Two. We do all the work to get to some point where we now have a Tree Board in place, they come online, assuming it stays with the same schedule as the other commissions, in February of Twenty-Four at that point, and then presumably, they would be involved in the code and policy updates, and so then that's pushing all that work way out to Twenty-Five, because we know how long that takes. So, I'm just curious if there'd be, anyway, that's my, that's my thought process there, so we can address that at another time, because I've already heard the feedback from Mike's question, but.
Yeah. I would do something high level, for sure. And again, like I said, we'll bring that back prior to the April Fifteenth public hearing. We do know for a fact it's going to take us two years to work on the comp plan and those development regulations. We also know by, by fact that that has to be done by June Twenty- fact that that has to be done by June '24, with the GMA required. So we do have some deadlines there that are outside of our control. It's just kind of working with the others and getting some guest minutes on that and kind of filling that in and seeing how that can work.
Okay. And then my last item I'm going to ask about is putting the donations from ratepayers up into the 2122 column, because everything around here hinges on having budget. And that's one area where we can get money. So that's I'd like to look at moving that into group one. And that's the only comments I have.
Karen, do you have anything?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just want to make sure and give you a chance to test your mute button. I have I have two comments. One is, I think a lot of this discussion has kind of nibbled around this a little bit, but there are certainly some items in here I see that are first, let me say, I think that the groupings is a great way to organize this and makes it much more digestible and understandable for everybody and also gives you the option of figuring out how to manage your budget. So I really like that. And I think it's very helpful. I would be be just as a comment, be a little cautious, just caution about allowing the groups to the groupings to, you know, result in somebody missing something. And here's what I mean by that. So as an example, and this is just one example, but item 71 is hire or adapt an existing staff person to manage the work plan that's that's associated with a lot of this stuff, right? And when I think about that, I think, okay, if you think about that, that outcome or that task or that action, you have to back up and say, well, there's a period of time to interview and hire somebody. And before you can do that, there's an ask of a budget allocation from the city council and a budget cycle. And so that one is in group two, but it may require a little bit of a preparatory action in the group one biennium to be ready to do that in group two. And as I read through here, I noticed there were a few of those that it felt like to me, it made sense where it was, but there's probably an action needs to happen earlier to allow that one to happen in the group that it's in. And so that seems pretty intuitive. But then again, I know how sometimes people, they look at a work plan, they do what's on the work plan. Somebody's got to be looking ahead a little bit and saying, in order to facilitate the next grouping, we need to do a couple of things in the in the current time period. So I just encourage that some mechanism be in place so that somebody's paying attention to that.
If I can comment on that, you're absolutely right. And so how this would work is next year in 2022, oh, time is running, sorry, it seems so far out. In 2022, that first two quarters of the year, that's when we would and we do have this plugged in into group group one. And actually, this would be an ongoing effort as well, is is the budget starting to have those budget discussions and to start those budget discussions with our city council, what staff is doing in the background. And I and I think you, Commissioner Baughman, for bringing this up, there's a lot of work happening. And that is us doing research and getting numbers and looking at what things are going to cost. And when you have a implementation strategy like this, and we have a group two that we're looking forward to, so that work that would start in '23, all of those items, we're already gathering that information in the beginning of '22. So we can actually go to city council as part of our budget request to say, hey, remember that SIP that you approved in '21? These are the items that you identified happening in '23. We actually have done the research and we have the numbers. And here's what it's going to cost. And then that gets reviewed and approved or adjusted and approved. And that will solidify our '23 work program. So we are do that is what we do. That's kind of that background information. But it's nice when you have something like this where you can start doing that work in preparation of that budget conversation to funds of those '23 work items and '24 work items, to be honest, because it's a two-year budget.
Thanks. My one other comment, and I absolutely don't want to go backwards and back up. However, this has been discussed for a long time. And I there's been a kind of a theme of public comments that we've gotten around the topic of individual homeowners who want to remove a tree, and they struggle with, you know, there's a wide variety of things from they want to figure out the permitting process to they want to justify why they should remove the tree to they have actual real issues with a tree that's, you know, failing. There's just a wide variety of those things that go with individual homeowners trying to figure out the process of removing a tree. I thought for sure that there was a separate and specific action item in the plan related to that. And but that could be just the echo of this discussion over the last several years that I thought it was there. I didn't really see it. And I and again, I bring it up mostly because we've gotten, you know, at least as much public comment about that topic as anything else, maybe more so. And so given that fact, it feels like it should be more of a slap you on the face kind of a topic in the urban forest management plan.
Yeah, I think that's a great comment, Mark. And I think it also echoes what Commissioner Ramato was saying with, you know, clarifying, taking the steps to clarify what we do have. I know I've been working internally with Miriam Leitner, our planning manager, and Avro Beidi to update the the tree website we currently have to clarify the different types of tree permits and make that information much more accessible and more clear. And I think you're right. I think over between now and our next meeting, we'll, as a team, take a look at the tree permitting and the issues you both have raised and make sure we're adequately accounting for them in, you know, the early groups and in lead up to especially in lead up to the code changes that will be coming in group two.
Hey, I would just clarify it a little bit to say that in my perception of it, at least, is that a lot of this kind of revolves around somebody having to decide whether there's justification to remove a tree or not. And that's a hard thing to to deal with sometimes. So but it's not going to go away. And it should probably be part of this plan somewhere to at least, even if we don't know the answer, have it as a task to study, you know, or or decide that it's going to be a designated arborist or something, right? Because that seems to be a common theme in the in the various comments that we've gotten is who is the decider? Who's the authority on whether a tree can should or what's the justification to remove that tree? Anyway, again, I don't want to back up this process because I think it's great work. But that's a kind of a common public comment theme. And so we should really make sure to address it head on.
I think that's a great note. And Ian, it looks like you might have something to add.
Oh, just, you know, that's that is something that potentially could be the authority of a of a tree board, you know, in a in a lot of the different municipalities, you know, when 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 a tree becomes contentious, you know, the person wants to cut down the tree because they're annoyed about having to rake the leaves, you know, it's not really a good environmental reason. But then but they plead the case, you know, to the tree board because they 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 want to they want to get a, you know, special special permission, say, you know, and so that that's just some potential there where the tree board could be helping helping facilitate this in absence of strict code. The other option I've seen, like, you know, the city of Seattle has director's rules and, you know, and their line items get put into code that says, you know, everything has to comply with code, but the director has approval to adjust, you know, in certain circumstances, whatever the words need to be that give them some give them some some authority to, you know, to accommodate the millions of different reasons why a person needs to move a tree and why they want to keep it. And because it is, it's all it's all very nuanced and hard to hard to put down strict rules.
Yeah. And I guess my comment is mostly whatever whatever we do, let's just make sure that we deal with that as part of this plan. And I don't write whatever the solution is, we can we have years to think about that maybe. But let's not ignore the problem that seems to be repeatedly coming up or the concern, I should say, that repeatedly comes up. Let's just make sure that we kind of deal with it straight on as part of the plan and figure out whether it's the tree board or somebody else or whatever the right thing for Samamish is. Anyone else? Any of the other commissioners have anything else? I see some heads shaking no. So I think we are done with our comments and questions.
And Commissioner Baughman, I just want to make sure we'll go back and watch the video of today's presentation and your comments. But I do want to say we will follow up with the Parks Department and do a little more research on the tree board and bring that back for the April 15 public hearing. And we will look at doing some type of timeline chart, high level, to provide that information. So any amendments to to this implementation plan, that can be discussed at that public hearing and addressed as part of your recommendation to the city council. So like I said, we'll go back and we'll watch this video, make sure we captured everything that we promised to bring back to you. I'm sure I only captured a little bit of it in this commentary, but we will we will make sure we follow up. So I do want to say thank you to the Planning Commission. Specifically, you guys have given us a lot of kudos. But the twos and threes that we had this month, where we started and where we've ended up is really a big thanks to you. That is a lot of implementation strategies to get through. And so your suggestions on how to better organize this information to group it, to put a sequential order in place, I think, has really helped this conversation. And that is credit to all of you and your time offline, working with us on that. So thank you.
I would just like to second Kelly. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate the work that you guys have done. And thanks, Ian, for joining us tonight. Are we ready to move on to our next topic? Okay. Next, we're going to have some discussion about our development regulations, phase two update. And I believe, is that you, David, who's doing the discussion on that?
That is me. Good evening, Chair Baughman, Planning Commission, David Pyle, Community Development. Tonight, I have with me Jeff Arango of Framework, who has been helping community development with the Phase Two Development regs. We also have Chris Hankins, a senior planner in community development, as well as Evan Fisher, who's been helping support the Development Regs Phase Two project. What we're going to do is we're going to walk through a brief introduction to the topic. We're going to provide an overview of the Development Regs Phase One project, just to remind you all of the work that we did in Phase One. And then we're going to do a review of the list that was attached to the agenda bill for the evening and walk through some of the topics and some of the proposed changes we have. Jeff Arango has prepared a presentation for you tonight. I'll ask that that he share that. I don't know if it's possible, Jeff, if you can share that on your screen. And I'll run through the first group of slides. And then I'll turn it over to you for the balance. Okay, it's, yep, great. We have, yeah, perfect. So again, introduction, development regulations, phase two, project updates. The general schedule for the evening. So just just as a matter of an overview of the status of the project, so far, we've completed community advisory group meetings. We provided an update to the city council on February 16, took feedback from them on the same list that's attached to your agenda bill for the evening. We've we've commenced co-drafting on low priority topics. And if you recall, the way we arrange these topics in terms of priority is is high, medium, and low. We kept it simple. Red is high, yellow is medium, green is low. And what that means is that that's that's the level of complexity and the amount of effort that's going to need to go into these topics. So if you see something that's red or high, it doesn't mean that it's a any more of a priority, so to speak, than the other topics. It's just that for the commission and staff, it might require more dialogue in order for us to fully understand the policy direction that you want us to implement in writing code. So for those that are shaded red in the list, keep in mind that the reason why they're shaded red is that we we feel like there's going to be more conversation needed on those topics than those that are shaded yellow and green. The ones that are shaded green are are pretty straightforward. We feel like we've got a good handle on those. And we're ready to bring back code to the commission on. So we're, as we work through this, we're going to be working in batches. And we're going to be trying to make sure that we're we're getting enough screen time with the commission on those topics that are that are more complex and require more policy direction. Just I wanted to clarify that. We held a, or excuse me, following tonight's meeting, we're going to be holding a Planning Commission workshop in April. So remember that this is going to be an extended meeting. It starts at 5:30. We also will be holding Planning Commission meetings in May and June. And we've looked at the schedule and we've we've looked at some of the new rules that we have around publication of information. And we really we realize we can't achieve two meetings in a month on this topic just because of the production time that goes into getting things ready to send to you. One of the biggest limitations we have is that we we want to publish things in advance to make sure you're able to review it over the weekend and in the days leading up to the meeting. So we have to have our work done well in advance as well. So what we're doing is we're looking at holding one meeting per month through July, where hopefully we'll be able to reach the point of public hearing and recommendation to the city council. We did want to ask the commission to consider, and you don't have to answer now, but hopefully tonight or you could follow up after the meeting, whether or not you would consider making the May and June meetings extended meetings that start at 5:30 on this topic. There's a lot of material here. And we want to make sure that we're we're getting into it and have enough time for conversations on each of the topics. So just wanted to throw that out there and see if the the commission would consider that. Then we're we're targeting getting back to city council with this when they if they do take a summer recess, typically, in years past, the city council has taken August off and has not met in August. So what we're looking at is trying to bring this back to the city council sometime in September, when they return from their summer recess. So it it works out pretty well if we can get this to to public hearing in July, and then work through the summer on making sure all the materials are finalized and that we've done all the editing we need to do, and then get it back to the city council for their consideration in September. It provides that little bit of additional time to do that. So next slide. The community advisory group included four virtual meetings. It was a diverse group. It included members of the building community, members of the design community. It included neighbors within Samamish who might have experience living next to a construction project. It also included designers that live here in Samamish, so they were familiar with the city. It was advisory role. It wasn't designed to provide a formal recommendation. They didn't vote on a recommendation, for example. We were really there to learn from each other and to identify some issues and see what the response was from the group, brainstorming. But it was a super helpful group. And we had a lot of really great conversations with them. They reviewed and provided early input on some of the the topics that you'll see on the list. We did have initial one-on-one interviews with them in order to prep them for it, in order to make sure we understood their perspective on some of the issues so that that would help us tailor the materials. And the their focus was primarily on framing issues and identifying potential code solutions. It wasn't on writing the code language at It wasn't on writing the code language itself. It was just really giving us guidance as to how we might fix something based on their perspective as residents, designers, builders, whomever it might be. Next slide. So differently than the community advisory group, the planning commission is tasked with refining the work done by the community advisory group. The focus is on the list of issues and actually drafting code solutions. The, there you are. This meeting is following, it will be followed by a workshop in April. And we'll be continuing to meet with staff, between staff and consultants outside of the meetings to keep working on drafting code. It's quite an effort. So there's a lot of time we're spending on this. You know, we're meeting, you know, in two to three hour blocks internally, trying to work through some code issues in order to make sure they're ready for you all. And finally, the public hearing and legislative process will begin in September of 2021. So we're hopeful to get this done by the end of the year. Ideally, we would have a code that takes effect either before the end of the year or on January 1st of 2022. That's a pretty clean way to implement code. In cities I've worked for in the past, it's been great to just have major codes take effect when the year rolls over. Makes it easy to remember. We did, we are proposing a modified schedule as previously discussed that provides additional meetings, just to make sure we have enough time with you and that there's enough time between the meetings for us to prepare materials. The issues and solutions themes, the list, they address the gap between permit plan review and construction. If you recall from past discussions we've had, we're pretty good at reviewing permit plans in order to get a compliant design out the door with a permit issued. We're pretty good at holding inspections and managing the construction end. However, the problem that we have is those are two separate groups of people. So the planners and the designers who are working on it are one group. That gets handed off to the builders and the inspectors. And they're not in the same offices together. So there's, there can be a disconnect in interpretation of what the plan means, et cetera. So we want to try to really bridge that gap. You know, it's, you're all working professionals and you've experienced different teams that hand things off to each other and some of the gaps that can occur between those teams. It's the same thing. So we're just trying to understand how we can better provide that handoff. We'd like to add some teeth for enforcement during construction. And the issue here is that, you know, builders might find it beneficial to just simply bend the rules a little and, you know, move the clearing and grading fence in order to allow for an excavator to get in or something. But there is damage that occurs from that. And we need to make sure that the plan that's approved that meets our code is what is actually being built. So we're looking at teeth such as fines, stop workage, other means. So we want to continue to work on that. It's really important that we change the culture and practices of building. You know, not, we have many builders that do a great job, that follow the rules, that build great products. We have a few builders that don't do that, that are really difficult to work with and that are constantly bending the rules and that you have to watch them constantly or they're going to move the fence and take out a tree they weren't supposed to and then you'll find out later. You know, these are the types of problems that we want to avoid. The best way to do that is to culturally change their practices and make sure they're aware that there are penalties that we will hold them to. We want to make sure we're clear on when connections to public infrastructure is required. This has several meanings to it. You know, when are you required to connect to a sewer versus when are you allowed to have septic? We're working with the Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District on that. We're looking at what type of road connections are necessary for private roads or driveways, shared use driveways. We're looking at when you're allowed to receive a permit if you don't yet have a power drop set for the property. We've had problems with builders running generators for months while they're building homes and the generators are running around the clock because they're trying to dry the mud on the sheet rock and running heat pumps in the house. So there's all sorts of problems if we don't understand exactly what is required for utility and infrastructure connections. We want to look at adding to the rule set, amplifying the rules, if you will, for infill development on vacant lots. We want to make sure that when a home is being built on a vacant lot in an existing established neighborhood, that there are some criteria around how that home is to be built and designed to fit in with the neighborhood. We want to augment criteria and design standards to help guide outcomes. So we have criteria and design standards in our code, but we definitely feel like they're missing key requirements. So keep in mind that the code we have is from King County and was inherited in 1999. King County's changed its code since then, but we haven't largely. So since then, the industry has changed, markets changed, the technology has changed. So we really want to be adaptive to what's going on now, but also beware that we're faced with a lot of infill and we want to make sure we've got the right criteria and design standards. We want to make sure we eliminate permit requirements for small scale activity. You know, if you're going to rent a mini excavator on your property over the weekend, you probably need a permit for that, given the damage that could occur. We also have an issue with nibblers, as we call them in some areas, who will pour, you know, 200 square feet of concrete every weekend with a hand mixer. And before you know it, they've got several thousand square feet of concrete on their property. So we want to define, you know, how that's handled and what do we do about with that type of scenario? So, you know, it's the death of a thousand cuts and you want to make sure that you have a requirement as to when a permit is required. We also want to have a permit in many instances to document it because we want to know how it was built and what happened on the site. So we'll be talking about that. We want to design or develop some PUD standards for flexibility. And the idea here is that if a developer is able to assemble a larger number or a larger parcel, a larger, or is able to put together an assemblage of parcels that is meaningful and larger, and they're able to provide for blending around the edge of the project and landscaping along the frontage of the property and say, you know, it's a 100 unit project or something of that size, does it really matter what they're doing in the middle as to the setbacks and how the buildings relate to each other? Because people who are moving into that neighborhood are buying into that condition as opposed to people around the edge of the property where it's being imposed on them because it's in their backyard, it's adjacent to them. Or people who use that street, that streetscape, who are then it's being imposed on them because they drive by it every day. So the question is, you know, if it's internal to a large site, does it really matter that they have the same setback as the rest of the surrounding community if you can't see it? And if you are knowingly buying into that when you're buying the property, right? There's a question that we have there. And it's a policy question. And if the commission says, no, we think it should match, well, that's the direction we'll go. We're just trying to sort out, you know, how to provide for, I guess, specific regulations, but then provide flexibility for a developer when there's a larger site involved or something like that. And then finally, we want to fine tune the settings of some of the development controls that we've worked on in the past. And with that, I think the next slide is, oh yeah, there's a couple more of these. And this, these are some reminders and parameters, limits on what we're doing. The focus is on the single family R zones. We're not working on the town center. There's no changes to the shoreline rules, although you can supplement the shoreline rules in Title 16 and 21A. We're not opening up Title 25. There's a whole process that goes along with that. Those are state adopted rules that we have to go back to the state for. It's fairly cumbersome and I, we don't have the budget or timeline that will allow that here. There are no changes to critical areas rules. That doesn't mean we can't supplement them in Title 16 and 21A. Critical areas rules update is right on our doorstep. We're going to start working on that here real soon and we really don't want to duplicate efforts there. In addition to that, typically, critical areas rules evoke a lot of interest in the community and we want to make sure that we're looking at those rule sets cohesively and using the right outreach tools that we have for critical areas updates that are state mandated updates and state mandated rules. Again, now we're not looking at changes in the town center and we're not, we're also not looking at making changes to the city's public work standards and rules. Again, those can be supplemented in Titles 16 and 21A. The public work standards were recently adopted and we're not in a position or nor do we have the resources to open up the public works codes and public work standards. But what we can do is look at ways to supplement them and influence them through Titles 16 and 21A. So with that, we can go over a summary of what we did in phase one. For those of you that were with us in phase one, phase one was a project that we as a department took on. I wrote the initial draft code language. The commission did a great job helping me clean it up and amending it to make it more user friendly, to make it clearer. The topics that we included in phase one were density rounding, setbacks, building heights, mass grading, fence heights, parking, street frontage, and critical areas work permits. Next slide. Density rounding changed how partial units of density are rounded for different project types and it added a requirement that units earned through rounding are affordable duplex units. And the issue here is that historically, Sammamish had not had a limit on rounding. Most cities have limitations on decimals and how a decimal is considered for rounding. So for Sammamish's case, if you had a partial unit of density, I'm trying to recall exactly what the scenario is, I believe it was a half unit, that it would automatically round up and you were given the extra unit. So if you achieved 4.51, you were given five units. And if you achieved, you know, 12.6, you were given 13 units. If you were achieved 12.2, you were given 12 units. But what that led to was is developers and designers are pretty crafty and they were able to start looking at ways to acquire slivers of land from the property next door that would get them to, you know, 12.51, just enough land they'd buy from a neighbor and that would get them a whole other lot. So there were ways that there were extra units being built out there beyond what the density was supporting if you were using a straight mathematical calculation. So that was really an important one for us. So what we did and with the commission and with the council was, we determined that if you have a partial unit, so say you have 4.51, well, you can round up, but that extra unit of density needs to be built as an affordable duplex. So you have the choice of building four units or you have the choice of building five units, but two of those units of the five need to be built in an affordable duplex. So three market rate units and one affordable duplex with two units in it. So the idea here is that if you're going to take the, if you're going to get the benefit of the extra unit, that you have to then give back in providing affordability through an affordable unit and a duplex. So it provides diversity in housing, it provides diversity in pricing. And what it does is it gives back to the community by providing a different, you know, a living space for someone who's not just buying a 4,000 square foot building in a subdivision, right? So that was the idea there. Next slide. Setbacks. This was probably the biggest one, one of the biggest ones. So setbacks was one that actually I attribute this to the planning commission. We were struggling with large homes on small lots and that was one of the complaints that we regularly heard is that you're seeing these buildings being built that are, you know, 4,000 square feet of building on a 4,000 square foot lot. And over time, as the markets changed, the trend got to be bigger and bigger homes and smaller and smaller lots. And the, we looked at some different tools we could use and we decided that we didn't want to add any new tools to the toolset because when you add a new tool to your zoning controls, there are often unintended consequences as to how all those tools work together. So what we did was we looked at what tools we had and we have a tool, we have setbacks, which is measurement of the building from the property line. So what we did was we changed the designations. Previously, we only had front yard setbacks and interior setbacks. And what that meant was is that you had to measure one setback along the street and then you would measure an interior setback around the building. Prior to 2016, it was five feet. So you could build a, you know, a 4,000 square foot building on a lot and have it be five feet off the property line around the side and the rear. Then in the front, I believe it was 15 feet was the setback that it had to meet. So what happened was, over time, you started seeing these bigger and bigger buildings being placed closer and closer together and we needed something to adapt to that condition and change that outcome. So what we did was we created a front yard, a side yard, and a rear yard. And we then created a set of dynamic setbacks that respond to home size. So if you want to build a big house, you need a big lot. If you want to build a medium house, you need a medium lot. If you want to build a small house, you need a small lot. So the bigger the house is, the bigger the setback is, basically. The, some of the other things we did was we created some, we're actually are, you know, most of the cities in the Tugez Sound are struggling with how to figure out how to allow for accessory dwelling units. Well, we did this, and it was pretty simple. We added an allowance for accessory dwelling units that are less than 1,000 square feet in size and less than 18 feet in height. And we allowed them to be five feet off the side and rear yard property line. So if you have a property that can accommodate an accessory dwelling unit, you could put it in your back corner of your yard and you'd have a rental unit or you'd have a place for in-laws to stay or you'd have a place for extended, you know, large family to live. So those were some of the things that we talked about with phase one. We also added an allowance for you to reduce your setbacks, the side and rear yard setbacks with an adjacent parcel when you made an agreement with your neighbor. So if you owned a home, an existing home, and you wanted to do an addition on your home, but the setback wouldn't let you do it and say you needed to bump out your kitchen to add some space or you needed to add to your bathroom and you're not going to replumb the whole house and move the bathroom and you needed, you know, three or four feet, you could approach your neighbor and you could enter an agreement, into an agreement with your neighbor that would allow you to encroach into that setback. So the idea there is trying to get people out, talking to their neighbors. You know, one of the problems we as a department have is that we are often put in the middle between two neighbors that don't talk to each other, who are very upset with each other. And we wish they would just simply go out and talk to each other. So what this does is it kind of helps, you know, push them into just talking. Well, you know, and a lot of times I think these neighbor disputes are easily resolved if they just talked about it. See if there's any that I'm missing here. None that are really important here. Building height. So this is another one that we addressed. So in the past, we used to measure building height based on average finished grade. And what that meant was is that if you lived in a neighborhood and you had a vacant lot, you know, you're in established neighborhood, vacant lot, it was a flat area, a builder could come in and bring in fill and raise the elevation of that lot, say five feet. And then they could build their house on top of that and kind of make the house, you know, dominate all the other houses in the neighborhood. And it was a trend in the market that's been going on in the Tugez Sound for a while. I've seen it in other cities where I've worked as well. So what we did was, we set the measurement of building height to average existing grade. So you don't get the benefit of mounding dirt to make the building taller. So with the idea there is that that will help pull buildings down and make them more consistent with the character of the surrounding landscape and the surrounding. with the character of the surrounding landscape and the surrounding buildings. So that's another change. We also limited the facade height to forty feet. This is really important because we were experiencing buildings on sloped lots that were, that had facades or walls, you know, five feet off the property line. So imagine you're in your backyard, and there's a property that slopes up behind you that had been vacant, and somebody comes in and builds a home on there, and there's a seventy foot tall wall with, you know, four stories with windows looking down at you and a deck up on the fourth floor, you know, and they're looking basically down into your backyard. So one of the issues there is that we were seeing these tall walls be built, not a lot of them, but enough of them to cause some concern that this was a trend we might see continue. So we put a limit to forty feet on a facade wall, otherwise you have to step it back. There are some exceptions to go taller if you add some modulation or some architectural details to it, like recess decks or other things, so it's not just a mono wall. We also added an eighteen foot height restriction for detached accessory dwelling units, and I already mentioned that. The next one, please. Mass grading. This is a really big one. So one of the things you see in the community that's happened traditionally as to how homes are built in Sammamish is, the property is cleared, and then the property is leveled. And what happens here is builders will come in and flatten the property and create building pads that they can then put any combination of homes on, so they can sell you a lot, then sell you the home that you want to buy. And it broadens their market to different people who want different homes and want to live in a different area within a subdivision. So it's marketing. It's also simplicity, you know, it helps them get the drainage right, it helps them get the sewer right. There's a lot of reasons why it's beneficial to the builder. But what it does is it creates situations where you have retaining walls that are holding fill, a lot of fill in some cases, and cut walls that are holding an existing, you know, area, so there's a home above that was there, and they cut the line, and there's a ten foot wall that's put there, and then they flatten it out, and then they put a ten foot wall over here and fill behind that in order to create a flat area for a subdivision to occur. So we put a limit on the amount of cut and fill that can occur. We added some limits or, excuse me, exceptions and deviations there, so it's not so rigid that you can't develop a property. There was a lot of dialogue between the building community and the city council as part of that, so those rules were fine-tuned by the city council to be considered appropriate to work with developers as to what is reasonable. We added a restriction on speculative clearing before permits are issued. The issue here is that we were seeing builders coming in and wanting to get a clearing and grading permit to cut down all the trees before the permits were even done being reviewed and issued for construction. And there's a few reasons why that's problematic. Don't need to get into most of those, but it has to do with the fact that some projects don't ever make it to construction, and if they've cleared the property, well, then the property's cleared. What are you going to do with it? It also changes our ability to review and inspect clearing limits as they relate to actual construction plans, to make sure tree protection's in place, to do proper tree counts and inventories prior to construction. It also can, in some cases, extend the life cycle of a project where the duration of construction is longer. It can lead to a shorter project as well, so there's a benefit there sometimes, but it could also be longer. So what we did was we just said, you know, hey, you have to have your engineering done and your construction permit issued if you're going to go clear a site. We felt that was appropriate. Next slide. Fence heights. This is a big one because fences are used for tools for various things. They can be used as tools to screen lighting, they can be used as tools to maintain privacy or restore privacy, and we were seeing situations where, when a vacant lot was cleared behind an existing development, people had been used to the vegetation that fronted those fence lines, and now there were homes right behind them looking into their backyards. And if only the fence could go two feet taller, that would block the view from someone's kitchen bay window looking into somebody's living room. And what it did was it allowed us to have fences be installed along property lines in the rear primarily and some sides where it would provide that screening and separation that is necessary while you're waiting for the vegetation to reestablish and some of the trees that are planted to regrow. There's that temporal loss there when you take out established landscaping or vegetation, native vegetation, and you put in landscaped vegetation, it takes a while for it to grow in. It's not immediate. You know, they're limited to thirty-two feet in length along a property line, so they're not, you know, very long, requires a building permit, and it requires an agreement with your neighbor. So there are things you have to do to get a taller fence, but we wanted to allow it to occur on the property line as opposed to our inability to have that tool. So next slide. Parking. We added a requirement that every lot created has to have an additional equivalent of off-street parking space. We were seeing projects being built that didn't really have well-thought-out designed streetscapes, and there was no parking. And in older division that's next to a new division, when there's a Super Bowl party or a Christmas party, the, all of the people in the new division who are going to the party were parking in the old division, and we were getting calls and complaints from the old division saying, hey, these guys built this subdivision, they don't have any parking, and whenever they have anybody over, there's twenty cars in our street. What's going on here, right? So we wanted to make sure that we tried to balance it out a little, you know, adding too much parking is impervious, and it impacts streams and stormwater systems, so we wanted to try to find the balancing point. We think we did. Next slide. Street frontage. This is another one where we were seeing many lots we created that didn't have an actual presence on the street. We had, you know, a cul-de-sac, and then it would, you go from an arterial to a short stem to a cul-de-sac, and then to a shared-use driveway that might have five lots down a shared-use driveway, and none of those homes actually had a connection. There's nowhere to put the trash cans, there's nowhere for extra cars to be parked, it's hard for deliveries to work. We saw many, we still see many disputes with property owners who live on shared-use driveways because somebody blocks the driveway, and they call the city, and they want us to get them to move their car, and it's a civil issue between property owners, but yet they want us to solve it. So we wanted to change the rules to try and diminish that from happening in the future or minimize it. So we required that all new lots created have to have thirty feet of street frontage on a private street or public street, which cuts back on the use of private, shared-use driveways. Next slide. Critical areas work permit. This is anytime you're doing work in a critical area, you need a permit, there's some exceptions there that we'll get into here because we want to look at retooling this one as part of this effort. So I think that's it. There's a little more time than I wanted, than I intended to spend on it, but I think it's really good background, and happy to talk offline with any of you if you have questions about any of those efforts as part of Phase One. The good news is, is we think we made some pretty good choices in what we changed with Phase One, and those will really help us here in Phase Two. Now we're getting down into more of the detail. Phase One was a coarse, heavy lift. Phase Two is still a heavy lift, but it's finer details, and it's looking at some of the other problems that were harder to solve. So that's why we're here tonight. So I'll pass it off to Jeff now. Thank you for listening during that. I know it was a bit of background, but again, I think it's important.
Yeah, great. Thank you, David. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be here again. My name is Jeff Arango with Framework. We have a couple of slides we'd like to go through on the Unified Development Code, and then we are going to go through a couple of the actual code topics and have some discussion around that. So the other major piece of this project is the Unified Development Code, and as David said, the foundation of the current code, as you know, is the King County Code. And so the purpose of the Unified Development Code is to pull multiple titles within the Sammamish Municipal Code into one document that deals with all the topics around development, has a consistent structure, organization, formatting, graphics, you know, easy to understand, easy to navigate, making it more accessible to the public and understandable are all major purposes of this project. And so we'd like to talk through, as David said, we've been meeting regularly among the staff team, and we've put together a brief strategy on the Unified Development Code that we'd like to kind of run by you and talk a little bit about. So the first piece is, right now, the city uses code publishing, and code publishing is, you know, an online widget, so to speak, that cities can use to post their code, as you know. And, you know, early on, in the Internet days, there was huge benefits of that, right? Codes were generally paper documents, it made it more accessible, they provided support services to help codify documents. But as things have changed, there are some now, I think, cities realizing there are some obvious limitations to that, and cities have more access themselves to tools and, you know, websites and things to be able to put out their code themselves. So the direction that we'd like to head is to develop a branded code document, and I'll talk a little bit on the next slide about what we mean by a branded code document, using InDesign, which is a publishing software, which will, again, allow us to achieve some of our goals that we'll walk through here in a couple minutes. In our work so far, we've been looking at some best practices. We picked a handful of cities to look at their codes, and we've been going through those in our staff meetings, we'll share some of that with you. Also on our team, one of our subconsultants, Code Studio, is a firm based in Austin, Texas, but they pretty much do exclusively development code, so they've been able to provide some great examples for us to look at as well, and one that I'll share here with you in a moment. Another thing we'd like some input or some feedback on, if not tonight, you know, sometime during the process, the sort of next level that we're seeing some cities go is now creating kind of custom or branded websites that are exclusively for use with the development code. One, it gives the city the ability to kind of manage that internally, allow for regular and frequent updates, so if something is adopted, you know, there isn't necessarily as long of a lag time before that's out in the public. And, you know, so what we would be proposing here would be develop, again, this standalone website, and this would not be something that we would do as part of Phase Two and the Unified Development Code, but it could be something to think about as Phase Three. The other thing that you can do with the website is not just have the actual legal code, but you can have links to related information. You can provide, you know, examples of development, other resources for the permitting process to really make all of these things very accessible to all users of the code, whether you're a developer, you're a neighbor, someone in the community, everyone sort of has access to that. And just finally, in terms of the UDC and the sections we're bringing in, again, as David said, it's focused on twenty-one A and sixteen. There are a number of other titles we're going to bring in so that they're formally part of the code, but they will essentially just get the new numbering system and the new organization, but will not be fundamentally amended for various reasons, but could be subject to future amendments, and will have a good, again, foundation in the UDC to support future updates to the code. So this is one of our best practice examples. We think it's quite a good one, and it touches on some of the things that I just described. So this is for the City of Buffalo, New York. This is a project that our sub, Code Studio, did work on, they were a sub for that project as well. There are several things we really like about it. One, again, it's branded, called the Buffalo Green Code. I think, you know, that expresses, you know, some level of, I think, environmental values. From what we've heard from Code Studio, you know, the notion of green here was really about sort of supporting existing neighborhoods and compatible infill development, not really because their city's mostly developed, not really about subdivisions at this point, so that was sort of the branding that they wanted to bring forward. It's got a really easy and understandable table of contents. It's probably difficult for you to see on the screen, but again, it's all there right in front of you, well organized, easy to understand, easy to find the code sections that you're looking for. And this is another shot, and this is something we are going to do for some of the zoning districts, but they have these really nice zoning district profiles, and it has all of the information that you would need to understand how to do development within that zone, as well as links and references to other related content. The other thing we really like is it's got these really kind of nice and simple graphics, and it's a very consistent graphic style throughout the code. We are going to be doing some graphics for this round, but there's, again, the opportunity to build that out over time, once we have this really good foundation of a development code. So lots of things we like about that. It's available online if you are interested in taking a look at it. This is another example from our work in Bay Bridge Island. This is not a Unified Development Code, but it is a, what we would call a branded code document. And what we mean by that is you're trying to express kind of what, express your community or your community values to those that are looking to develop in Sammamish. As David said, you know, it's really about changing the culture of development, and that's going to require a number of different approaches. It's, you know, it's really important to have those prescriptive standards, you know, that we just went through in Phase One. Those are all really great changes, things like setbacks and building heights and those types of things. But it's also, I think, really important, again, to kind of set the stage for people when they're looking to develop. So one of the things that we did, we had this preface that talked about the island, sort of the community, what's important to them, things that are expressed in their comprehensive plan. Again, this isn't a regulatory thing, but again, if you were sort of coming from outside of the community and you read this, you'd say, okay, well, I kind of start to understand what this community is about and sort of what they're going to expect from me as I go through the development process. And then it drills down to the section on values and principles. And again, the document's called Design for Bay Bridge, and we have these statements, "Design for Sustainability and Climate Change," "Design for Walkable, Bikable, and Connected Communities." You know, it's just two pages of content, but it really kind of sets the stage for all of those other standards that, you know, any development will have to meet, you know, and there's a rigorous process for making sure that those projects do meet the code. But these sections, we do find really important and sort of an orienting piece of the code. And so we would ask you to think about, you know, if we were doing something like this for Sammamish, you know, what would we want to express? And certainly, we know what's in the comprehensive plan and what's in the community's vision, and we've spent time talking with the community advisory group about that, but at some point, probably starting in the April workshop, you know, we'd like to talk that through with you and sort of how we put the best foot forward for Sammamish and make those expectations really clear upfront about what we're trying to achieve. So that's pretty much the overview of the Development Code at this point, and because we've had some, you know, schedule modifications, we are looking to bring the Unified Development Code forward to the Commission in July with the other pieces. Again, most of it will be reformatting and then incorporating these Phase Two updates. The other piece will be the graphic piece. We have graphics we're going to be developing for some of the new sections that relate to things like the design criteria, and then we have some graphics we're planning to do for the zoning district profiles, and then, you know, we'll have to think about other gaps that we might be able to address during Phase Three. So at this time, we'd like to go through the code topics. We have gone through what we're calling the green topics or the low topics. Again, not that they're a low priority, but just we think they're a little more straightforward and maybe warrant a little less discussion in terms of policies and direction. But before I do that, I want to just pause and see if there's any questions on the Unified Development Code or anything else that David presented, and then, you know, this part of the presentation is really meant to be much more conversational and to get your input. So I'll pause there for a second.
Any other Commissioners have comments or questions?
Just, I have a clarifying question. Actually, it was just what you'd gone through with the Bay Bridge Values and Principles. That setting of vision is really important and not trivial at all. I guess everything I've looked at before has been more code-related. So Jeff, just for clarification, I think I heard you say that this is something that we would want to be discussing and, you know, potentially, you know, looking at what the Community Advisory Board said and so forth. So is that, that is some of the work that we'll be doing in the upcoming months?
Yes, I think so. I mean, if this is a direction that you would like to go, I mean, we've started to put together an outline for the Unified Development Code, and one of those pieces is like a preface and perhaps a user guide, and maybe there are some elements of this that go into that piece. You know, the other thing we've been doing is looking at the town center since that code was a new code that was done since the city was incorporated, just to kind of get a sense of the language and direction there. And there are some sections in there that do talk about principles in a similar fashion. It's a little bit more regulatory language than maybe this is, but it's similar. And so maybe we could take a look at that. But, you know, again, I think it's, if someone came in and they said, hey, I'm looking to develop in Sammamish, you know, and hey, you're on the Planning Commission, you know, what's this city all about? And it was sort of like the elevator speech of like what you wanted to tell someone if they're coming to develop in your community. I think that's kind of what we're looking at and I think, you know, we can draw from existing documents, but there may be some other ideas that haven't come up in previous conversations that we want to express, you know. And it could be things like, you know, trees. You just talked about an urban forestry plan. That's a really important thing to the community. You know, it's great to have some code language in there that expresses that, but it's also good to really say that upfront, you know, tree protection is a priority for this community and these standards reflect that. And so it just sort of orients people as they come in to seek development approval.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep. Good question.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Jeff, can I ask you one quick question? So I was on my other screen here, which is one of the advantages of doing it this way. I was looking at Buffalo Green Code and I, you know, I can see how it's definitely more sort of user-friendly and looks more functional and there's graphics and that's all great. It doesn't still seem to me like it's necessarily something that's designed for people that just do everything online, right? There's no links in here. There's not a lot of that kind of stuff. Is that intentional or is that just a matter of timing of, you know, now if we were going to do it, we would link the index and link all the cross-references or is that a bad idea? It seems like if we're going to evolve this into a modern tool, then it really ought to be a modern tool that's more of an online tool and less of one of these papers that's just online.
Yeah, no, really good question. I mean, I don't know all the intricacies. I can ask, I can ask one of our team members that worked on it and come back with you with that answer. But there's certainly no reason why you can't link content in a PDF document in the same way that you do a website, right? So it can link content within it. It can link content externally and I think that's something we want to do. But I think the real answer to your question is to move towards a website or a web-based system that would have even more dynamic tools to do what you described and also have other non-code-related resources, again, to help people navigate the development process, I think would be the, kind of the ultimate solution. And there are some new tools that we're looking at. Again, our subconsultant, Code Studio, is working now on a whole new code for City of Los Angeles. And one of the tools that they're exploring and we're looking at is ability to take a print document and very easily turn it into HTML to create web-based content that you can then modify. So we don't have all the information on that right now, but actually creating the website version could be much more streamlined than we've had to do in the past. So I agree with you. I don't think the PDF is necessarily the ultimate solution. I think it's sort of a bridge from code publishing, which I think has too many limitations to get at what we want, to the more modern tool that hopefully we could do in Phase Three.
Thanks.
Yeah. Good question. And we are, last piece on Bay Bridge, we are making this into a website right now. We just are kicking off a project to do that. The website will be Designed for Bay Bridge and, you know, I think we'll learn a lot in that process that we can kind of bring back to Sammamish as well. Okay. Unless there's any other questions, we can move into the first code topic. So these are not necessarily in any order. We picked a couple upfront we thought would be kind of good icebreakers, so to speak. The first one, you guys probably aren't going to be able to read this very well, so I'm going to have to read it out to you. The first topic, code topic number 26, says, "Current code does not adequately differentiate between accessory uses or accessory structures for which a building permit is required." So it kind of relates to our discussion earlier on some of the Phase One topics. "The preferred solution is to require a permit for accessory structures that has electricity and/or plumbing and to consider allowing those in the same setback standards that are applied for accessory dwelling units, which is the five-foot side and rear." And then in terms of a permit, we've been discussing any accessory structure over 200 square feet or those with electricity and/or plumbing would require a permit and we've started drafting that code language. And I think one of the questions is, there's a couple of questions. One, you know, how do we feel about setbacks for accessory structures? And do we want to, at some point, increase those setbacks? You know, either due to the size of the structure itself or because it's, you know, different than a accessory dwelling unit? It's a shed or something like that, that perhaps we think warrants a different setback? So it's a pretty straightforward issue, but we wanted to bring this one up and see if you guys had thoughts on this issue of accessory structures and setbacks, which typically happen in the rear and side yards. So I'll pause there and see if there's comments on that.
I have a question and not related to setbacks. I've got to get my head around that first. My question is related to what kind of permit are you referring to for these units?
So right now, we have it in here as a Type One permit, which would be a decision by the director with no administrative appeal. And you, again, you can't see it, but other permits that are in that class, it's the lowest level, but are like building permits, clearing and grading, boundary line adjustments, temporary use, right-of-way permits, things like that.
Okay, so. Here's where I'm challenged a little bit. It says, "Accessory structures over 200 square feet or with electricity and/or plumbing." So if I want to have a tool shed in my yard, that would not be 200 square feet, but I want to be able to charge my drill batteries and I ran electrical out there and got an electrical permit, I now have to get a whole different set of permits in that instance with the way this is written? Or am I reading that incorrectly?
I think you are reading it correctly the way it's written now, yes. You would have to get, so if it didn't have electricity or plumbing and it's under 200 square feet, you wouldn't even need a permit. You know, you'd just go and do it. You have to, you know, you'd have to meet the setbacks, but you wouldn't need a permit. And then this would require an actual permit, either due to its size or the addition of electricity or plumbing.
That's an area that's concerning to me because that adds a whole load of complexity to a homeowner who just wants to have a tool shed that's a little bit more useful. That's a lot of extra work that they'd have to go through. So I think the intent of the homeowner's intent is important and I know that's difficult to put into code, but I'd just be really concerned about adding that huge layer of complexity because I'm of the strong opinion that once you start doing that, a homeowner who just wants to put 20 or 50 amp service out to their sheds is now just going to pray he just doesn't get caught and do it anyway. And I don't think that's what we're looking for.
I would just add that I think that there's, I mean, I, sitting here listening to Josh, I come up with, you know, as crazy as this sounds, how does a treehouse where you put a light in apply here? Or what if somebody wants to put a hot tub in with a roof over the top of it? Or, I mean, you can come up lots of those scenarios. It seems, it does feel a little blunt without a lot of nuance to it. I totally get the, the concept is if somebody's building a shed or a building that's really a building, then yeah, there should probably be a permit and that setback should apply. But there's all kinds of other little things that, around the edges, that don't quite fit that. And I want to figure out how to apply this.
So I think that it might be easily worded by just changing the "or" to an "and". So if you take a structure less than 200 square feet with electricity and plumbing and make that a permit requirement, then you can have a smaller building that just has a little bit of electricity or just has a little bit of plumbing. But, you know, it fits within that homeowner discretion, I guess.
So, so can I clarify one thing? I appreciate all the conversation here. This is exactly, so this is a good warm-up for what we're going to be doing going forward, just by the way. This is the type of feedback we really are looking for. The issue that we're faced with in community development and permitting is the fact that oftentimes we have these structures that are put along the property line and that if there's power brought to them or there's plumbing in them, they become something a bit more intense than what they were maybe originally intended to be over time. And that then becomes something that we hear about from the neighbor. Oh, there's a, there's an air compressor in there running all the time or now there's lights out there that are causing light pollution onto our property. Or the one that I've heard before is they have a glass-blowing hood on the roof that runs all night long while they blow glass out there in their shed. And, you know, so there's, the potential for impact on a neighbor is much higher when you start to add these types of amenities to the structure. So to get at Mark's comment, we would handle this by the definition of structure. So if it meets the definition of structure, it has a limitation on where it can be placed with regard to setbacks. So a hot tub fits into that category. A treehouse fits in that category. So those all fall within the definition of a structure. The question for the Commission is, is whether or not you think it's okay for us to allow a structure that is smaller than 200 square feet along the side of the side yard or the rear yard, you know, up to five feet from the side or rear yard, without a permit? And then, you know, if you add plumbing or don't add plumbing, you know, what is the threshold where we should add additional setback to these structures? I guess there's two levels of threshold. The first is, what is the threshold where a building permit should be required, right? And that's the one that TC was talking about, is add a little bit of electrical or add a little bit of plumbing or maybe both of them is the threshold. That's the first threshold we're asking. And then the other threshold is, is what is the threshold where the building has to get a building permit and it has to be more than five feet from the setback? And if you could tell us that, based on what you think is appropriate, we could write the code to allow or restrict the placement of these structures with different type of amenity and different size in the community. I mean, it's challenging because we have people that would put like, literally, I mean, we deal with, we have 22,000 properties in the city, you know, we have quite a bit of property we deal with and lots of scenarios. And we have people that would put 10 of these sheds along the property line if they could. So we have to be careful how we write this because our code compliance officers are listening and they're cringing right now as we're having this conversation because invariably they will end up having to mediate a dispute between neighbors over these types of structures.
So I think that that also brings up an interesting point, which is, what is the total number of additional structures that can be placed, right? If I go off and build 10, 190-square-foot sheds and do all my different things in them, am I somehow, you know, I'm probably breaking the spirit of the law, right? But have I actually done anything wrong? Or am I one of those nibblers that you pointed out earlier where on a persistent basis, I'm just kind of pushing the realm of the limits?
That's a good question. So some cities have a limit on one. One detached accessory structure, less than 200 square feet, may be placed within the primary structure setback, no closer than five feet to the property line. That's an example of a code that's typical in the Puget Sound.
And do we have that today?
We do not.
So I think then, would an accessory structure and an accessory dwelling unit constitute the same thing? So could you have a house, like a granny pod, and then a shed?
You could. That's a scenario. So currently, the way we have it broken down in our code is primary structure, e.g., house. Accessory structure, which could be detached garage, right? Accessory dwelling unit, which is a living unit that has a kitchen, a toilet, a bedroom, that type of stuff, right? It's a living unit. It's independent. But it's limited in its size, as to how big it can be, up to 1,000 square feet. So you can't have it be bigger. An accessory dwelling unit can't be placed in the side yard if it's combined with a garage, for example. You can't have an over-garage detached accessory dwelling unit five feet from the property line. That's not allowed. Those have to be separated. So I guess the question then is, is as you go down the list, from the primary residence to the detached accessory structure, to the detached accessory dwelling unit, to the accessory structure, less than 200 square feet, this is sort of the range of things we're dealing with. So if you had a detached accessory structure that was larger than 200 square feet, then it has to meet the setback that's already in the code for the detached accessory structure that's already there.
Right. I wonder if we could modify the verbiage to state that you can't have more than 200 square feet in multiple structures, right? You can have two sheds that are 100 square feet apiece, but you can't have, you know, a 300 or a 1,000-square-foot shed, right? That would become like a garage or an accessory dwelling unit or something.
Yeah, that's, there you go. Because then we're limiting the total square footage that's massed to that close to the property line. And you could say, I think you hit on something, that maybe you say that it's the combination of plumbing and electrical is really where we're going. If you wanted to have, you know, a service run out there to, like you said, charge your tools and have a light, you know, I have one of those in my backyard. It's great. It's, you know, it's important. And, you know, that's acceptable. What we're trying to get away from, and you could even put a limitation on amperage if you wanted to, because that would preclude somebody from doing something like putting a really large vent hood on the roof because they wouldn't be allowed to have that type of power run out there for that.
Maybe you could just say no multi-phase power, right? Because then that would preclude anything over 120 volts and, you know, then you couldn't run compressors, welders, right, anything that's relatively sizable.
And again, the point isn't, the point is keeping that away from the property line, right? So if you met the normal setback, you could build a structure and have that, but you have to provide that additional separation from the property line because of the potential impact to your neighbor.
Yeah, I have this interesting conversation. And David, having not been part of the Phase One conversation, I really appreciate using this as an example and kind of what we're going to be getting into. I'm wondering if there's a role at some point or a step in this that kind of helps us have guidelines for how we, our decision process. And I think back at what Josh was saying, and one of the things that we're debating here is how easy it should be for the homeowner to just move ahead without the permitting process. So ease of, you know, getting your work done versus protection for your neighbors. And I have to think about this a little bit more, but there's probably a couple of other, you know, what's the right word for that? But, you know, these kind of criteria that would help us decide, once we've discussed those. So this is only one example. I'm sure there's many more items in the code that would come up where we'd have to have these trade-offs. these trade offs. You know, ease of permitting or no permitting versus impact to the neighbors or the neighborhood or the environment is probably just one example. I'm sure there's several others. So I'm wondering if at some point, you know, we would have that kind of discussion that would provide at least somewhat guide rails for, you know, how we want to make decisions on specific items such as this. Josh, you're going to add something there to help me out with this?
A little bit. Well, I don't know if I can help you out with it, but what, you know, I completely get why, I mean, the examples you brought up, David, are, some of them odd, but I can understand how they could come up for sure. I would be more willing to be a little bit more stringent in the code as far as what permits were required if it wasn't so difficult to under, for someone who's never done this before, to go through and get it done. So I would be more, more, more than happy to make the code more stringent and be able to handle these things if a homeowner could get to the website and go through the building process and say, I've never done this before and have a real easy walkthrough. And, you know, so that there wasn't a, you don't know what you don't know when you're getting into this. And that's my concern. So if that can be part of this process where we make it a bit easier for people to know what to do, then something like this where we require a building permit in this instance would be less troubling to me. So that's, that's what I have to add on, yeah.
So, so, you know, a, a permit doesn't have to be a building permit necessarily because a structure that's less than 200 square feet is exempt under the International Residential Building Code. So you actually don't need a building permit, you don't need building plan review. What we need is a permit and really it's a site plan permit. That's what it is. And a site plan permit is far easier to submit and process than a building permit because you don't need building plans. All you need is a, is one sheet, which is a site plan that shows the property lines and shows the building and has some checkboxes, doesn't include multi-phase power, is not plumbed, you know? And then that just becomes a real quick review and pretty easy to issue. You know, you can almost create a sheet, eight and a half by 11 or 11 by 17 where it's got grid and someone can draw using a, you know, a graph paper background to it. And then there's a bunch of questions at the bottom they fill out, put some information in and then they submit it. And that's, you know, that's how simple this really should be. Because then that just creates a record of, okay, 200 square feet, five feet from the property line, five feet from the rear line in the corner, you know, not, under the, you know, this is the amenity that's included with it, done. And it's issued. And, and it can even be self inspected to the point where someone takes a picture of it, right? And just submits it. So it's not a burden on the city and it keeps the fee down because then you're not sending an inspector out there.
Yeah. Sorry, excuse me. I failed to do my job here. Could somebody move to extend the meeting, please? We're past our time.
So move.
What time?
Add, what, another 20 minutes?
So let's say, let's say till 9:15. Okay. Second? I'll say second. So although the favor of extending to 9:15, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks. All right.
No, I, I like the idea of kind of a self-service style permit where the applicant can basically attest to certain things. Right? And if you have kind of a series of checkboxes, you know, I attest that it's going to be five feet off the property line, I attest that it's not going to be over 200 square feet, I attest that it's not going to have more than one of these two things, right? And then off they go, pay some, you know, I don't even know at that point if there's a fee, right? Just at least you're documenting it and following a process.
That's something we could set up, you know? It's, and, and the idea there is, they, they had also checked that they're attesting to the fact that, that if the information is wrong, that they'll be subject to code enforcement and possible removal of the structure. You know, that's, it's, it's kind of like, sorry, you know, you, you told us you were doing this and it's not what you did. And, and that's the culture we're trying to, like we said during the earlier presentation, we're trying to stop that culture here. It's not the homeowners that are really the issue. You know, it's the builders and the community that come in from outside of the community. So, so I, I kind of feel like this is a, it's more of a bookkeeping exercise. So if somebody calls and says, you know, hey, they're building this in their backyard, we could say, oh, well, yeah, there's a, there's a, you know, a permit on record for a detached accessory structure, less than 200 square feet in the southwest corner of the property, looks like it's got, you know, a, a basic power connection to it, that's it. And the neighbors will say, oh, okay, well, that's good to know you know about it. And we can tell them, tell them, and that's a learning moment for the neighbor that that is, is allowed and it's exempt from a building permit, right? And that, but then it's allowed. So that, that helps then the neighbors smooth out their dispute they're going to have over the shed. You, you could tell that we've had a lot of, of these scenarios and I'm kind of scarred from too many neighbor, neighbor encounters in the city. So we're just trying to work on that.
I, I have one more kind of follow-up question. Within the 200 square feet, are we talking about interior space? Are we talking about covered space? Right? If you build a, I don't know what, like a 16 by 16 shed, that's like 190 something square feet, right? But then you put a four foot overhang on each side of it, it becomes something totally different.
Yeah, we, we would measure it based on where the, the rim of the, you know, the, basically the rim of the roof is, it would hit the ground. So if you were to drop a plum line from the rim, wherever that would hit the ground, so that would include an overhang. But you might be able to have more roof space than that if you had your roof, like a bigger eaves, then, then that, that might be something that's acceptable because what if you wanted to have a, you know, a, like a little patio underneath a deck, like a garden shed with a little patio, under, under a, under a roof overhang? It's, it's, it's a policy decision for you all. You know, this is the type of stuff that, you know, your, your, your neighbors and friends in the city might want to build. And it's whether or not you think they should be allowed to do this in their backyard without permit and locate it in the corner of the property near the, near the property line.
So one thing I would say here is, as we do this, I would like to make sure that, that, and you guys help us for sure, that we keep a focus on what was the purpose of this item being on the list to begin with? Right? Let's not stray too far from, from, you know, what was the reason that's, like right here, current code does not differentiate between accessory uses and where a building permit is required. So what, why is that an issue? Is it because we think they should be and it should be a building permit? Or is it because we need to just define one needs a building permit and one doesn't? And I think if we, you know, we could certainly, and many of these topics come up with like gazillion scenarios, but I, I would just really encourage that we stick with, try to keep a some focus on what the original concept was, which I think here was more about drawing a more bright line between what needs a building permit and what doesn't need a building permit. And, you know, all of this other stuff is, is interesting and helpful, but that's really still what we're trying to do. And maybe that means we do need to create a new permitting process or maybe not. Maybe it just means that we need to articulate more clearly what does need a building permit and what doesn't need a building permit. If I understand what the reason of this topic is being on the list.
Yeah, I think that's, that's well said and that is, you know, you described it well. I think, I think it's, it's, you know, from, from having done a lot of permitting myself for, for cities, you know, it's, it's these things that sort of fall through the cracks. And it also, I think, protects the homeowner too, from not going out and doing something unbeknownst to them that violates the code and, and requires a costly fix or requires or causes some, you know, conflict with their neighbor or whatnot. So, you know, I think, I think just having a record of it is, is a really important, important piece of it for those ones that don't require the building permit.
Yeah, I want to know where the guy, where the people are that are blowing the glass. I want to go knock on their door. I know more about that.
Yeah, I'm sure that's just the tip of the iceberg in terms of interesting things people do. Are there any other thoughts on this topic? You know, of course, you know, something, you have an idea or a thought, you know, there's going to be other, other opportunities to weigh in on this, but we can kind of move forward and refine some of the draft code language based on the, the direction that you've all provided.
I would only just reiterate that, that we can noodle around on this a lot and I, maybe Josh said this, but if we create something that's cumbersome, people will just bypass it. And so let's not create something that, that just encourages people to, to do the wrong thing. I think that's always a danger with some of these topics is that we can create something very nuanced and that makes a lot of sense for all of us. And then people either won't know or they'll just bypass it because it's a hassle. So let's not create, you know, scofflaws just by accident.
Could I, could I suggest that? So this was, this is a great conversation and it's kind of what we had hoped would happen tonight is that we'd have an example to walk through, you know, a, a few of these topics with you, you know, one, two, three, depending on how many we, we have time for. But I, I really like some of the suggestions I've heard here regarding the format and going forward. So regardless of the content of this actual topic, this is, this is really valuable for us also because we want to make sure we know how to set these up for the next round of conversation we're going to have in April, where it's going to be a longer meeting and we're going to want to get through a, a larger volume of these. So, so I think Commissioner Bresko had an idea that, that we, maybe we could add into each of these slides that will help prop conversation, what we think the impact is to permitting, what the impact is or the risk is to neighbors, right? In those that, it's a kind of like that balancing of, of, you know, is it going to make it more burdensome for the applicant? Well, there's some of these topics that we're going to be looking at that you're going to say, I don't care how burdensome it is, this is a really important issue in order to ensure the outcome is the right outcome for the neighborhood, right? So there'll be those and we'll try and flag those where we think it's okay to have more process because that's where we get the information that enables us to inform the neighbors and make sure the project turns out okay. There are others where it's kind of a diminishing return like this, where it's like, okay, do you really need them to submit a building plan set? That's a huge burden on the applicant or on the, on the, on the property owner, right? So, so maybe there, there's that thought of, maybe we could add some of those details into this. Are there any other thoughts that any of the commissioners have regarding how we could set this up to facilitate your conversations and things that you would want to know right out the door? Is there a way maybe, you know, like those traditional things, that, when you go on Yelp and you look at the menu at a restaurant and it says, oh, it's, it's three dollar signs of, you know, the clock is, two clocks means they're pretty slow. You know, is there a way, should we graphically try and, you know, represent these so you can quickly look at it and know, okay, this is, this is where this conversation's going?
I kind of remember restaurants. Not, not really, but kind of. I, I do think, you know, one thing I will just say is that when I read through these, I also very much think about, and I don't know if it's the right way to look at it or not, is, does this, is this more applicable to, to a builder doing a subdivision with 100 homes? Or is this more going to impact a, you know, 20-year retired couple that have lived in Sammamish, lived in Sammamish for 20 years and, and that, you know, they're, they're just doing something to the back of their house and their yard that they've taken care of that whole, you know? And I think that it's, whether that's always fair or right or wrong, it's hard to get away from that, but you gotta, you gotta kind of consider who's the most impacted by this. And I think inevitably, like you said, David, sometimes it's, it's like, well, this is, you know, we need to deal with some of these big developments and people are going to probably be more firm. But we got to be careful not to, not to inadvertently sort of create a burden or punishment on people that really are not the problem.
I think it's helpful, like David gave some scenarios, calls that come in, you know, what are we trying to prevent happening? That's helpful to have those examples.
Yeah, maybe to some extent, some way of, of talking about how common some of these things are, right? One time in five years or five times a day or whatever, some way of evaluating how frequent this is an issue. Because people can perceive it because they saw it one time, but that might be different than something that you guys say, oh yeah, every single day, this is a challenge for us.
So one of the benefits of this team is Chris Hankins was the city's code enforcement officer for a number of years. So he's seen quite a few case scenarios in Sammamish where we, we have had disputes with neighbors, code violations, problems. So, you know, he'll, he'll be helping us out here in these conversations, get a bearing on what are some of the scenarios he's encountered. There's a lot of, a lot of strange things out there that we see that, that you, you probably would, would scratch your head and wonder what exactly they were trying to do.
I think one thing that might be helpful for me at least in this process is, David, you corrected me on the difference between a building plan and a site plan. And I think a primer on some of these things might be helpful because I've not done a lot of that stuff myself. So knowing what we're asking people really would make, would make my job easier is I'm looking at what, what we're asking people to, to do. So just even a primer, if you could point us to a good website or something, I, so I don't want to burden you with a lot of work, but I can also go Google it myself. But I'm sure there's some nuances that Sammamish already has, so.
And there might be contextual nuances to each of these that are unique. So, you know, it might be that as part of our presentation leading into your discussion, we take a minute to orient you on a primer on what the different permit types might be, for example, or what the, you know, you're, you're going to hear about something called the Ballinger codes, you know, what are the Ballinger codes? That's, that's, Tamaraq and Inglewood have a very, very interesting setup because of the historic nature of the, the plats that are there and the fact that those look like public roads, but they're really actually private roads, just based on a law that automatically vacated them. So we can get into things like that with you and orient you around why these are problematic for us. Because if you looked at it as just a general lay observer, you would, you would wonder why there's a problem. But if you understand the layering about what's going on in some of those scenarios, you, you start to see why it's a big problem for us in getting the outcomes that we want.
Jeff, do you have another one for us to take a shot at?
I do, yeah. No, this, this really good discussion. I just wanted to say before I go to the next one that we'll do some thinking on how to kind of set up those conversations. Maybe there's in some cases pictures or graphic or something too that might help it. And maybe we could put together just like a list of, of resources or primers, you know, that, that you could, you know, research on your own time and then we can bring, you know, pieces of it to the meetings when we bring up specific topics. So thanks for those inputs.
One, one other thing, let's just be careful. On the, on the PDF I'm looking at, that was number like 28. So somehow we gotta just track our numbers a little, a little bit carefully, otherwise everybody's going to get confused.
I see 26 on that one. Code topic number 26?
Yeah, and on the, like I said, it's just the numbering is a little goofy, like on the version I'm looking at, I don't have a 26. I, I'm sure it's just a formatting thing, but let's just be a little cautious.
Yeah, no, for sure. No, we'll take a look and make sure that we have it all synced up. So... So, yeah, another one related to process is another good one. This is code topic number eight. And, you know, this is the, the, the kind of classic issue of by the time the applicant or developer comes to the city, you know, they've got pretty, pretty flushed out plans, right? I mean, they, they've spent some money, they've maybe done some engineering, you know, they're down the road to the point where, you know, they don't really want to make changes and so their position might be, you know, trying to, to pursue the plans they have. And it can be difficult for staff to then, you know, get modifications to the project to meet the code or just simply improve the project. So the issue is projects advance beyond the conceptual design stage before applicants have discussed code and can result in costly redesigns. Related to that, administrative process and requirements are not clear and specific. General requirements for application materials don't provide the necessary information to review projects. And then process and permitting timeframes are defined in different locations. So what we had offered in terms of preferred solutions, there's a process that is a, a kind of an informal upfront review process, somewhat similar to like if you went to a permitting counter, but it's not formally sort of mentioned in the code language, but it's called project guidance. And so what we've been discussing is sort of making project guidance a requirement for most applications. The intent is not for it to be super onerous, but again, it provides some level of protection for the applicant property owner as well, so that, you know, they're not proceeding in a manner that's going to require more costs or, you know, redesigns or reconstruction down the road. So we would require that for, for most project types. And I think there's going to be obviously some discussion around what those thresholds are and making sure that, you know, we're, we're targeting this to the, the most important types of applications and not overburdening people. We want to create a more specific set of application requirements for different types of site conditions and for different types of applications. One of the things right now, there's not a lot of differentiation. So oftentimes cities will have, say, a different requirement if you're, you know, doing a hundred lot subdivision versus, you know, building one single family home. And the city does have obviously some of that to some extent, but not as much as you might see in some other cities. So we want to refine that, make sure we're getting really good, you know, information. There could be different types of, of graphics that we want to require to, to be able to kind of move beyond just the standard engineering set and really understand how it's going to fit in with the neighborhood and not impact, you know, adjacent property owners. Let's see. So we want to give the director, not the discretion necessarily to waive requirements, but the discretion to require additional materials if something comes up in the review that is not addressed in the standard set of materials that are required. And that's a pretty typical thing that cities will put in there. Another one that's somewhat different than what we've talked about on these other numbers here, but allow the director the ability to waive fees where the permit may be a barrier to an action that has public benefits such as removal of invasive species. David has some good examples of this one, but this is the case where, you know, a homeowner, let's say a homeowners association is supposed to be maintaining an area and it's grown, grown up with invasive species. They have to go and get a permit between the permit cost and the cost of, you know, hiring someone to do it. It's somewhat cost prohibitive, so they decide just not to do it. And so the permit is, is becoming a barrier in that sense to something that the public has an interest in and there's obviously a public benefit of having those removed. And then the last one is, there's 120-day review requirement for projects under state law. There's always some confusion in terms of how that is calculated, both in terms of when it starts, you know, that it starts the day that someone hands the city the application or does it start the day that it's deemed to be complete and there's a time limit on when that has to happen. And then there's the issue of even after you deem it complete, you're in the review, something comes up, you need the applicant to respond to some, some changes or some additional materials. You know, they take three months to do that. Does that eat into the 120-day clock or, or does it not? And I think our opinion with our, in our internal discussions is that, you know, the clock should stop in those situations and the 120 days should be focused on those times where the city is actively reviewing the permits. But we're, we're interested in your thoughts on that. So, so that's, that's actually a lot for, for code topic number eight. And I'll stop there and see if there's any clarifying questions or comments on, on any of those issues.
Jeff, can you, I guess I got a little bit lost. And what does this situation apply to? Are we talking about permits for, for building a single-family house on a vacant lot? Or are we talking about big developments? Are we talking about all of the above? Are we talking about one of those small structures that requires a building permit? I mean, I'm not sure I understand some of that. It would make a lot of sense if you're building a subdivision and doesn't make much sense if you're building a shed in the backyard.
Yep, exactly. Good question. We, I think we've been discussing, and this is, this is open, we want your input, but we've been discussing, you know, nothing below building a new single-family home, I think is sort of our threshold that we've been discussing and maybe there's reasons not to include it. And, and I think, you know, for the single-family project, you know, project guidance could be pretty simple, you know, process. But that, it certainly wouldn't, I don't think would be below that. And it would go up from there to include, you know, things like subdivisions. And maybe for subdivisions, there's a little bit more of a rigorous process, you know, that happens because it's more complicated and there's, there's sort of more at stake. So with that, I, I think we're, we're open for certainly input on that in terms of where that threshold would be.
I, the one comment I'd make is that I think it would be useful to have some feedback from city staff about that and mostly in the fact that if we were to set a threshold that was pretty low, to me, that's, feels like maybe that means a lot more necessary time spent on, on intake meetings or whatever, whatever they're called, project guidance meetings. And if that just gums up the works worse and creates headaches for staff and doesn't solve the problem, this makes more, more of a mess, then we don't want to do that. But I don't know really, there again, if there's, if there's 10 single-family home permits submitted every year, maybe that's not such a big deal. But I don't have a sense of that. So I think understanding that a little bit would be helpful.
So, so we found that, so the way the city used to do business is, is we had a, we had a permit counter that was open to the public and the people would come in and they would stack up sometimes, you know, 10 deep, 20 deep, waiting to talk to somebody at the counter. And most often it was an applicant's designer who wanted to argue with us about why they shouldn't have to do something. And that would take a lot of our time. And what would end up happening is they would leave thinking one thing and we would, we would leave that conversation thinking that, you know, we told them to do another study. This is the same scenario that we talked about during the stormwater presentation we had, I think, what, two weeks ago? And the issue here is that we, we, we do business differently now and we actually only do project guidance inquiries. So you go to a portal and you, you enter all your information and your questions in. We process it. We might call you. If it wasn't COVID, we might have a meeting with you. We provide a written response back. There's a record that's created. And we found that there are far fewer misunderstandings as a result of that. And it's saving us a lot of time and saving us a lot of legal expense because we're clear out the door. We, we, we are also hopeful that with the, with the restructuring of the code and the unified development code, that we will have a code that's easier to read. So people will actually be able to go to it and find their own way, so to speak. Right now, our code is, is scattered and, and very difficult to decipher, which is why I think we had so many misunderstandings in the past. But we've finally gotten to a point where I feel like we have a process that intercepts a customer, handles a customer, sorts the customer, and then puts them on the path or the, or the track they need to be on, whether if they need a permit, they don't need a permit. And then everything's documented early so that if they suddenly change their project scope and say that, that, oh, well, the city, I did project guidance, I didn't need a permit. And then we find that, oh, well, you told us you were building, you know, something and now it's 10 times bigger, which happens, that, that, well, that's a different project scope. You need a permit for that, right? So, so what, what this is right here was we had feedback from the stormwater presentations related to sustainable site planning, where, you know, this presentation we did, I think, a few weeks ago. And we had feedback from the council. And I think some commissioners also thought, you know, it's a good idea, why don't we just require them to go through project guidance? So I guess the question here is, is what threshold would you see appropriate to accept someone from going through project guidance?
What does project guidance cost?
Free.
It's free. Okay, what is it? Is it a meeting, a sit-down, or is it a, just, you know, a staff member points out these things that you might want to consider? Or what is it?
Yeah, so, so on, on our website, we have a, a JotForm portal where you can go in and you, you enter in your address, you enter in some basic information about, you know, your, who the applicant is, the contact information. Then you enter in a project description and you can include some questions about the property. Basically, it's a scope of work. This is what I want to do. What permits do I need? What things should I be aware of? What do you know about my property that I should know? And then we have a, a, what we've done is we've taken that JotForm, that, that creates a record in our permit tracking system. So now we know you've made an inquiry. It's registered to your property. So when code compliance goes out, they can see whether or not you've actually come in immediately because they just pull it right up. And, and then what we do is we, we, I'm mindful of the time too, if you need to extend. The, then, then what, what happens is we're able, we, that automatically feeds into a, a form that's a response form and pre-populates the response form. And then what happens is the planners are able to look up the property, maybe call the applicant for a quick clarification, and then enter in notes about what they learned about what type of permits required. And there's all these checkboxes for things that are, that are, things we always check for, you know, is there critical areas known in the property? Is there any past permit history you should be aware of? You know, things that, that you might want to know about. And then they email that to you. So there's one from planning and one from public works and one from building that goes back to you. And then as an applicant, you can then, and it, and it says in there what permits are required and where to get information on those permits. So then that sets you on the right course. So this is what I want to build. This is my address. These are, this is my, my initial site plan or whatever reports I have. And then we, we tell you, okay, that's good to know. This is the permit you're going to need. These are all the submittal items you're going to need. Here's more, here's where to get more information, right? So that we've found has been really helpful to customers. The difficulty is how do you tailor it to be right-sized? Not, not do too much or not enough?
I guess that begs the question, if the city doesn't put down everything and later there's something that comes up, can the user then say, well, you didn't tell me that, so it shouldn't have to apply to me?
It's a good question. But, but we also were faced with that at the front counter, although this time it's in writing, you know, I, yeah.
Maybe there's a disclaimer. Sorry, can somebody extend this for, let's just do 30 minutes and we'll work to meet that.
Move to extended 9:45.
Second.
But moved in second to extend to 9:45. All those papers say aye, aye, opposed, no. Thank you.
A process question as we're going through. This would be, I think, an example of a good time to have a list of the different items where this could, or this could apply to, so that we can wrap our head around what, what level, you talked about single-family home and less wouldn't apply to. But if we had the different categories, that might help us make a decision. I think this, to me, requiring product, project guidance makes sense on a lot of items. I think in my property, I live within a critical, critical aquifer recharge area, which changes the amount of impervious surface I can have or something. And there's no way I would have known that without submitting project guidance to the city or trying to decipher it in a map and even know to look for it, right? So I think it makes sense that we have maybe a lower threshold for some things than just a single-family house. I don't know what it should be, but knowing what those thresholds are so that we can start to think about it would be helpful, I think, in, in this conversation.
Great. We'll bring that back in April.
So I mean, I just would add to that. I kind of concur with, with Josh in that I think done right, a project guidance process that people are aware of and participate in could be a huge benefit in almost any case where you need a permit, just because most people that would benefit from that are going to either know all the rules and be looking to bend them or not know the rules at all and be very helped by learning what the rules are. But, but I still say that I think it's a, it's definitely got to be a discussion about how you can articulate something in the code or in the language, supplemental language that says, you know, single-family home, sure. What if you're building an addition? What if you're building an addition of this size? What if you're, right, there's all of those nuances. So I would just want to get some help with understanding how, how good we can be about writing language that's usable and that people will use. Because I do think it's a great process and we just have to make sure that it's actually functional as well.
So the, the other benefit of the, of the project guidance process that we found, and one of the things we found when we stopped offering an across-the-counter service, like informal across-the-counter service, which we don't do anymore, we haven't done it for a year and a half about now, is that we have, we have data. And the data is absolutely wonderful. So we understand what trends are, what people are asking about, what properties people are asking about. And we've, we've started to look at having a consultant come in and scrub all of those records and find what the top 20 are, for example, questions that people are asking, and then create public information handouts on those top 20 questions that will then be information sheets we could have on our website. So, you know, that's the benefit here is that if people are asking the same question over and over again, we weren't capturing that at the counter with our informal process. But now that we actually have a data, like a massive data set, we can mine that out and then create these handouts. So that's one of the benefits from that.
Should be able to see my screen now. And there are, there's some requirements in the, there's a feasibility conference, pre-application conference section in Title 20, 2005. And there's a list of sort of development thresholds that we were thinking we could draw upon. So the way that we have it right now, project guidance would be required for any type-one decision that included A through F here as a starting point. Properties that have 5,000 square feet or greater of development and/or right-of-way improvements, property in a critical drainage area, property that has a wet lens, deep slope, landslide hazard, single-family residences and accessory buildings impacting critical areas, all new single-family homes or residential dwellings on lots graded prior to, and we put for now, you know, December 31st, 2020. But what we're trying to get at here is that if, if a subdivision goes through a process, let's just say it's a hundred lot subdivision, I mean, they're going to go through project guidance for the subdivision. And if it's a builder that's building out those homes, you know, it may not be necessary to go through project guidance for each one of those 100 homes. But certainly someone that's going in and building on an existing lot. homes. But certainly, someone that's going in and building on an existing lot, in an existing neighborhood, where we've seen a lot of issues come up, we think, we think it would be a good idea. At this point, we hadn't considered anything beyond that, just the initial home, not additions and things like that, and we could clarify it. And then the last one was all projects subject to SEPA review. So if you had, for whatever reason, a type-one project that had to go through SEPA review, and then it would apply to the other type-two, type-three, and type-four, and we could go over what those involve. So that's, that's, I think, where we're, where we started, and, you know, certainly looking for more input, so we can get those thresholds at the right levels.
Jeff, just to make sure, the black is existing code, and the red is your edits?
Yes, correct. And that's, that's where it's an existing section, but we're just sort of connecting this piece to that, if that makes sense. So these were, these were the lists of type-one applications that require, require a pre-application conference, which is still part of it, it's sort of like the next step. And so we just added the two, the two sections in red.
I would just say, I, I mean, I think that, that's a pretty good definition, and I guess we probably just have to decide if that's the right dividing line.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know, if somebody wants to put a big addition on their house, as an example, you know, how often do we run into the kinds of problems that would be avoided by a, a project guidance conference or exchange at the beginning? And if, if that's not really a real common thing, it's just an occasional thing, then maybe this is the right dividing line?
Yeah. What do you think, David?
I think it depends on who's, who's pushing the application. If, if the applicant, if the property owner has hired a architect that knows how to prepare a permit application and submit it, and knows what to look for, and knows how to read a code, usually we don't have these problems. But if an applicant is hired, is doing it themselves, maybe doesn't have any experience, or has hired an architect who knows how to build, knows how to design homes, but knows nothing about reading city code or applying for permits, then we tend to spin out with him a little bit. And the idea here, you know, one of the fundamentals here is, we want a better applicant. We want an applicant that's going to come in, and, you know, the, 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 if there is such a thing, permit nirvana is when you do a first-review decision, and you actually issue the permit on receipt, because you have nothing, no more comment on it. That rarely ever happens, but I, I still would strive for that, that to be the optimal case we want. Most often, you have two or three rounds of review, and if we can get them down to one or two, because we're doing project guidance, then we're successful. That's how I see it. So, you know, we, we see this as a really great tool. Again, it doesn't have to be required, you know, optional's still good, because people will still do it, but, but it's those, those, it's those cases of a certain threshold that you really want to require. And I think that's, that's, if the, if the commission was to, to provide that direction to us, that we want to require project guidance on projects of this scale and scope, we can make that work. Because you could still do it as, as optional, it's, we're not saying you can't do it, we're just saying it's only required in these cases, all the other cases are optional.
If anybody have any more comments? It's getting a little late, people running out of gas, maybe, but any other comments? Looks like no.
Okay. Do we want to move to another topic? All right. Okay, so this one, we do, we do have some early draft of the code for you to look at. So any, this will be the format going forward, anytime you see it in red, in Word, it's underlined, here it's not underlined, will be, will be proposed code. So this is another good, interesting process one that I've just really struggled with in my permitting days. Proposal modifications that constitute a substantial change and require a new application are not defined. So, so this is like the issue, someone comes, comes in, they submit a permit, and, you know, it's got certain features and certain types of development and whatnot. And, you know, there's a public notice that goes out, maybe someone, a neighbor goes and kind of checks in on what's happening, you know, don't have any concerns, and then later down the process, the applicant wants to make some change of some level, and, you know, at what point does it trigger re-noticing the applicants, you know, having a new review process, and sort of going through that again? It's, it's sort of kind of a fairness and process question. And right now, there, there really is very little guidance about that. And so, you know, we, we started generating this list of scenarios where, you know, where you'd have to come back and have a new application, and to some extent, you know, restart the clock, but maybe not entirely, if, if part of the project has been, you know, reviewed, and, and those aspects have a change. But some of the things that we thought of so far, you know, things like increasing the number of dwelling units, seems like a simple one, that would require a new application. Any increase in building square footage for non-residential projects. So, you know, it's a commercial project, they come in, they say it's a 2,000-square-foot building, and then they want something bigger, you know, might, might trigger a reapplication. Changes to building setbacks, increases in building height, additional encroachment in the critical areas or buffers, if that's something that's part of the project. An increase of five or more parking stalls, you know, again, that could be set to an increase of one or more, but certainly something related to parking, I think, would be, would be good to include there. Anything where a variance or waiver is required, so don't come in and submit an application, then come back and try to get a waiver, you know, kind of under the radar, or even try to go through a variance, although that would, I think, trigger a permit application in its own right. Modifications to the amount of proposed open space, which is a big deal, and we'll get into this in April, when we start talking about the, kind of the subdivision and neighborhood design issues, but this issue of open space is a big one, in, in terms of how these developments are, are being designed. Changes to the layouts of streets, trails, and bike connections, increase of 500 or more square feet of impervious surface, and then the catch-all, other changes determined by the director to constitute a substantial change. So I think there's obviously some scenarios we haven't thought of in this list, but it's, it's our starting point, so I'll pause there.
Are these from, sorry, are, are any of these changes cumulative, or are they incremental? So somebody comes in and gets a permit, and then says, I'm going to add four more parking stalls, and then somewhere else, they go off and say, I'm going to add 490 square feet of impervious surface, right?
Yeah. The way it was written, it was supposed to be independent. To do it the other way, the cumulative piece, which you, you raised a good point, you know, it could be below the threshold to do 10 of these things, you know, ideally, that would at least be captured under, under other changes determined by the director, but maybe we had a minimum, add some more specificity that talks about that. But right now, it was just sort of one, one metric per, per item on the list.
And, and are these, are these topics that have to be noted or documented somewhere along the path of this building, right? If they come in one week and say, hey, just wanted to let you guys know, we're adding like 450 square feet, and you say, okay, cool, you're under the threshold, you don't have to do anything, and do the same thing?
They would still have to, to get that addition approved. The question is more process-related, in terms of what, like a new application, and a new process, and sort of starting the clock new, and noticing people. So they would still, again, have to get approval for a minor modification, it could just be done administratively through the same application. David, correct me if I...
Yeah, so, so, so I think, I think, I want to be clear here, that this is related to our, our review of a permit application, not actually after the establishment of a building. So, so what happens in, in the scenario that we encounter is that we, we go through the process of doing a pre-app, with a pre-application conference, which is required, they submit application, we do a public notice, the public notice includes a site plan, the neighbors all submit their comments based on the orientation of access, setbacks, building heights, tree protection, all the things that they're interested in. We go, we go a little further through the process, and, and we provide some, some comments and back to them, you know, as through corrections requests, and say, you need to do X, Y, and Z, and then they come back with a site plan that is so drastically different, that it looks nothing like what was submitted originally, nothing like what went through pre-app, nothing like what was noticed. And, and we want to make sure we have some teeth in our code that says that if you make some changes to, you make changes of this scale, or this magnitude to your design, you got to start over. Because there are a lot of people out there in the community that have received the notices, and have provided comment based on the design that was included in that original. And then they're, they're always very shocked to go to a hearing to learn, like, wait a minute, this is a very different project than, than the one that I originally got notice on. No one told me that it changed. How are they allowed to make all these changes? I didn't have opportunity to comment on this, right? So it's, for us, it's, it's an issue where there are some changes that are acceptable to make, but there are other changes that are like so drastic, that you really should tell them, hey, guys, if you're going to change your design like this, we need to start over.
I would, as I look at this, I would be willing to accept a lot of these as, instead of an increase, I would say any increase. But, you know, in, like, in the number of dwelling units, or any increase in the building square footage. Other things, like the impervious surface, I would probably lower the threshold, along with the number of parking stalls. But I, I think some of the things are relatively benign, right? If you restripe your parking in order to be able to accommodate more vehicles, does that really matter, right? No, not so much. But, you know, if you're doing something major, I, I genuinely think you should have to kind of start over pretty quickly.
So the classic example that I've seen in other cities that's used is the, the point of access. So i- if you think of a, a corner property that has, you know, a street and a, and an avenue, right, and, and, and it's, and they're both arterials, it's this street and this avenue, and the project that comes in the door is taking access from the street, and it shows, you know, an intersection being added, and big project, you know, all the traffic's going in that way. And everybody provides comment on that, and then you go through two rounds of review, and they, and they realize, well, you know, it's going to be more expensive for us to build it this way, we want to take access from over here. And then they change the access point. And they come back, because, you know, they're, they're value-engineering it, they're trying to make it work, I get it, it's a business, that's what they do. But then, they want us to keep reviewing it, and, and we say, no, that's another app, that's a different application, because you got, you know, you, the whole project is oriented a certain way differently now. And, and other cities have rules that say, if you change the point of access, it's a new application, right? Things like that. So we're just trying to add some of those types of things to our code. The question is, which ones, and what is the threshold? So you, so TC, you picked up on that really well. It's like, some of them should be any, some of them, there should be an actual, like, dial that you're turning to fine-tune it of, you know, how many square feet of impervious, right?
David, this would also be an issue for permits that you've already approved, but maybe in the, you know, construction process or something, or maybe they haven't even started yet, but you've actually issued the permit, and now they come back and they want a modification to the permit? I think this would also apply, right, in terms of whether you could do it administratively, or, you know, you got to go back out to the, to the public portion of the process.
I think the only thing within this that I would be willing to let someone skate past on without having to make a notice, would be if they were to add additional open space.
Yeah.
Like you can have that one for free.
The, yeah. The, the, well, let me, without going down a rabbit hole, let me just explain one thing, why, why we put that in there. Certainly, we, we think, you know, having more open space is great. But what, what's really happening is that the amount of open space that's being provided above the, the amount that's required, which is 390 square feet per unit, I think, is actually causing, is what's driving the really small lot sizes. And some of that may be corrected by the dynamic setbacks that have been put in place, but the only, the only reason why you might want to rethink that is, if they're providing more open space, they're probably shrinking the lots, and you, you may want to have some say in that. So that was, that was why we put it in there, instead of just putting reduction in.
Well, then, is there...
Because, I mean, you could write that, another way to write that would be if you, if you change lot sizes, let's say it's a, let's say it's a subdivision, right? And the only way you're changing lot sizes typically is, is with the open space. I mean, it could be, it could be you change your street network or something, but most likely, it's going to be, it's going to be directly taken from the open space. So that, that would be another good one, change in lot sizes, or maybe even a reduction in lot size.
Well, I think, I think any change in lot sizes would be kind of all-encompassing, because the other thing that they could be doing is leaving the open space the same, decreasing the lot size in order to tack on another house, but then we've got that in, increasing the number of dwelling units.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the number of units wouldn't change, because there's no minimum lot size in the city, so the only way that they, like in an R4 district, the only way you get down to like a 6,000-square-foot lot is because you're providing a lot more open space. Generally, is, is what we've seen. Okay.
Did you have something?
Just one. On item B, you, you spell out non-residential projects. I was just curious of the reason for that.
Because if we put, because I wanted to do residential by units and commercial by square feet, because if you said any increase in residential square footage, then that could be like a small addition to a home. Whereas, non-residential implies like a commercial or a civic, you know, institutional type use, and then for residential projects, it would be more based on the number of dwelling units. So for a multifamily project, if it was a significant increase in square feet, it would likely be related to, to increases in dwelling units, although there might be some additional thresholds we want to establish for things like apartment buildings.
This applies for a single lot with a single-family dwelling unit going on it, does it not?
Well, those don't, I don't know, David, what's your thought on that? I mean, those don't generally have the same noticing requirements, although we've been talking about changing that. I don't know. I mean, if there was an additional encroachment in the critical areas, and you were a single-family home, I think that should trigger it. But a lot of, you know, if you're requesting a waiver, maybe that triggers it. But a lot of these just inherently wouldn't apply to a single home on a single lot.
Smaller project type, but, but, you know, those, those can be some of the more problematic for us. So, you know, it's a question of rightsizing it.
Yeah.
I might have missed, it's very possible that I missed it in the description of what this was covering, but I didn't, understanding what kind of projects this applies to, I assumed that it also covered single-family homes, and I, so, did I miss that in the explanation? If, it's highly possible I did.
No, I, I didn't, I did not explain that well. No, I didn't, I did not explain that well. But this would, this would be mostly applicable to where there's outside interests in the project. And that does include single-family, single-family homes in some cases. Certainly, if there's critical areas. And as David said, this is where there's a lot of friction with new development. So I don't, I think part of the answer is, first, it's supposed to address those that actually have a noticing requirement. The second piece is that one of our other topics is actually going to address the noticing requirements. And we have some thoughts even for single-family home projects for how we can communicate, facilitate some better communication and noticing to the neighbors. So as we play with those levers, that will affect how this applies. So again, first, it was those projects that required noticing, which typically isn't single-family homes. But as we change those projects that require more noticing, they could become part of this criteria, set of criteria here. Hopefully, I answered your questions.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments?
None at this time.
Looks like no.
All right. Well, we made it through three. Do we want to go to another one? Or I forget where our time is.
I think we'd probably be more productive if we try to take them up next time.
Okay.
And we'll work on the formatting.
I would say that it would be helpful if we're going to do this in the chunks like this, if you let us know ahead of time that, you know, we anticipate like topics, whatever, right? 17, 23, and two. And then I think that's helpful for us to think about it a little bit ahead of time, if that's possible.
Yeah, no, we can definitely do that. And in fact, I think our plan is to send you out more materials next time, including the actual draft code. And as, you know, as we start getting, we're more like just reviewing draft code, it may be better to just pull up the Word document and scroll through it. So we'll give some thought on this to organize that, so it's easy for you all to access the information and prepare for the meeting.
Yeah, might help us all to be a little more efficient if we know ahead of time.
Yep, sure.
Really good.
Yeah. Really appreciate the conversation. David said you have some members with keen interest and experience with codes, and that came out tonight. So thanks a lot.
Just enough to be dangerous. Okay. David, I'll just check with you. Anything else on this topic, or can we move on and wrap things up?
The only thing I would ask of the commission would be to verify whether or not, and you could take this up, you wait till next time to verify, whether or not we could make all those workshop meetings, early start, 5:30 meetings. Just given, you know, the experience of getting through the material, having an extra hour in the night would really help us get through all this in an effort of trying to make a July hearing date.
Would it be possible to have somebody send an email out to the commission members, particularly since we don't have R2GIA here on Carthage at drop-off? And then that way, we can, at the next meeting, decide if that's okay or not by looking at our calendars.
We can do that, definitely.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. The last thing here is public comment. I don't see any callers. Maybe for the record, Jackie, you should read the statement, and then we'll make sure there's nobody.
Yes, of course. Well, I'll read the statement and give someone a chance to call, because I only just put it up on the screen. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment can be submitted. Up to seven minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. And the access code is 699-839-229. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs. And the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. We did have a caller join us, so I'll go ahead and unmute you. Please state your name and where you live for the record.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I live at 408, 208th Avenue, Northeast in Simamish. Been there for 20 years. On topic 19, just done, you should definitely have it applied to single-family homes. And almost any time you're checking things, when they're in a critical area, you will need to have more. I can suggest a couple things, since you guys aren't going to have a meeting for stormwater on March 18. There's popcorn for planning that was done on two subjects. One was done on small construction projects. The other one was done on trees. They're about 15 minutes or under each. I haven't listened to the tree one yet, but I will assign myself homework to do that. And if you haven't listened to the small construction project one, it's actually really good. It even covers things like, hey, if you're buying a pre-made shed from Costco or someplace else, and you're putting it on your property, you do need to have a permit for it. One of the reasons is a lot of times when people do things, they don't think about what's under. Like they dig and plant a tree right on top of their gas lead, which could actually cause a real safety problem. Or they put a pole or part of their deck right next to their sewer line, where they're supposed to have some setback from it. Or they don't realize some structure that they have in their property or whatever. People just aren't, they just own what they own, and they just do what they want to do, and they don't think about it. And they really do need to do that. I will also say that if you want to get your records from your house, and if it was before the city was incorporated in about 2000, Department of Planning and Impermanating Review, deeper from King County, can actually, with just a phone call or an email, in a couple days or a week, can send you any records they have on your house. So I think people just need to be a lot more educated. Also, on the city website, you don't have anything about locate 811. One call for all your utilities. They won't do it on your property, but they'll do it to your property. And people do need to call that or their contractors. So I think those things are really important. People need to do a lot more planning. I did a pre-guidance form for my own property recently. And even though I didn't meet any thresholds for needing a permit, it did say, "Here's all the stuff that would apply to your property, and you need to follow the code even if you don't need a permit." So hopefully, that will answer some questions for you. And then, thanks for all the work that everybody's been doing. And these comments, I guess, are directed toward more of that development reg phase two with Jeff Rango and Framework, and everybody's been doing a great job. But they can also apply to the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which has also been, a lot of work's been done on that with consultants and staff as well. And then also with stormwater, which is getting moved around. There's low-impact development. And a couple topics that I still don't see covered, even though input was given during the advisory group, is compaction of soils is something that changes what you can do. You can't do low-impact development if you're driving across your lawns when it's wet, or if you're adding gravel places, or if you're adding plastic. I call it the hidden impervious surface. A lot of times, people don't know what to do with their yard. They don't want the weeds. So they just put out a giant sheet of plastic, hire a bark blower and come in. And it looks really cool, but you can't ever get anything to grow later because you've got problems. So I would like to see that, that that's not allowed anymore. And then a lot of times, when people pick up the plastic, they don't know what to do with it. So the neighbor takes it, and then the neighbor adds it to their yard. So it just really creates problems. And then the plastic can also break up and blow across other people's yards, including mine, and also get stuck in the drainage ways. So the types of plastic that you use and what you do with it afterwards, I think, are important as well. In general, I'm not going to go through many comments here, because your meeting has been so long. But I do think that there's quite a number of things on the list that are very worthwhile in looking at. I'm really glad to see all the changes that are made every time that you guys are looking at new code, like the Buffalo stuff and the Bainbridge stuff today was really good looking at. I think in addition to the pre-guidance forms and the pre-application forms, there might be a warnings list, like the warnings of, hey, if you add impervious surface and you didn't say so. Or, hey, if you take out trees and you didn't say so, you will have to either undo it or pay really big fines. I think that might be added. I didn't hear anybody say that before. And I think, I'm trying to figure out if there's anything else here. Oh, on the Urban Forestry Management Plan. I think a lot of training does need to happen so people understand what trees are for. They're more than just the trees. They're the understory. They're the vegetation. They're the environment, the insects, the bees and the birds, and all the biodiversity lives in, including the fungus in the soils. And one person I know had said, "We really need to set a dollar value on our forests and our canopy, because if people don't understand all the eco-services that are provided, they do understand dollars. And if they find out, oh, our city has, you know, this many trees that are worth this much, and an individual tree is worth this." Like, I grew up in Bowdoin, Montana, and they've had an Urban Forestry Management Plan since 1993, which is 27 years ago. And they can tell you the value of each tree. They've mapped out all their boulevard and street trees. And they can tell you what it's worth. And they're doing a partnership program where they buy the trees, and you can plant them and take care of them. So I think there's a lot of those things that are out there. But I think just having a number on the tree. Also, King County Conservation District, I think, does a lot of things that we could partner with or achieve benefits from, including getting plants. And I also think there's a website I learned about called FreeTrees.org. I think they'll be using to get some free trees from that. So there's other things like that. And me and the other people I get this information from can probably write in about that. So the last thing I'll cover is, there's a lady, Barbara Robbie. The last name is R-A-A-B-E. She had emailed into the Planning Commission, because she lives off George Davis Creek, and they've had a lot of the big old trees dying. And she wanted to know what we can really do with them. Because there's a lot of private property owners that they're like on an R1 space, so it's a large lot. They've got a 150-foot creek buffer, other things. They want to be able to do things, but the tree regulations, as they're written, don't allow that. I also know another person I work with in Washington Native Plant Society doing restoration work. And they live up by East Simamish Park, up by Mead School. Their HOA does have a property. They'd like to do things with it. It's full of blackberry, but because of restrictions of things, they can't. So I think working on those in your Group 1 items and putting them as priority. You have people that want to do the right thing. They want to help. But they either don't have the information or connections, or the code is too restrictive, so they can't do them. So I would like to see you include that as the part, Group 1, for the Urban Forestry Management Plan. But anyway, thanks for everyone, everybody, what you did, all the conversations and talking, and my seven minutes are up. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mary. I'll hand it back to you, Chair Baughman. That was our only caller for the night.
Thanks, Jackie. Does anybody have anything else?
Nothing on our end.
Great. Could somebody give me a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. And moving to second, then we adjourn. We're a couple minutes late, but all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Great, thank you, everybody. Look forward to talking to everybody soon.
All right, bye, y'all.